Let's be out in the trucks still.
Let's hope.
Call the order, the regular meeting of the Minnetonka City Council for Monday, August 15th, 2022. Please silence your cell phones to avoid any unnecessary interruptions. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Padrigula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Striley?
Here.
They're all here. Leading us today in the National Anthem is Paul Stroklund. Paul is a retired 30-year active-duty combat veteran with the Army and Army National Guard. Currently, he's serving as a volunteer for the employer support of the Guard and Reserve. So please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Mayor, I won't be singing the National Anthem.
Oh, is that what it?
Yeah.
My fault.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you for your service. Just on a related note, as we move into the mayor's report, as just a relation there, Paul Stroklund's wife Pam was just awarded the North Dakota Association of Career and Technical Education Administrator of the Year. So that's another victory for the Minnetonka Public Schools to have someone like Pam on the team. So congratulations and send our congratulations to Pam there, Paul. Thank you. Carrying on with the mayor's report, had more than a few meetings since our last city council meeting. We had a Task Force 21 planning for the Nuclear Triad Symposium next month, Chamber EDC Board of Directors. And I would invite any of the council members to attend one of these meetings. It's active, it's responsive. That board from the Chamber EDC, they're really, they're doing a good job. And they're going to take that organization in a new direction, I believe. Meeting with a delegation from Grand Forks, including the mayor of Grand Forks, Brandon Bochinsky. They were up courtesy once again of Paul Stroklund and the employer support of the National Guard and Reserve. We got to watch National Guard members do an exercise, participate in an exercise on an attack on a missile field, and they gave us a few presentations. So really powerful, powerful day out there welcoming the delegation from Grand Forks who was there with us. We had some legislative strategy planning meetings. Planning, a planning meeting also included meeting with members of the Hostfest team preparing for a delegation from our sister city. Next month, we may have some more information at our next meeting about re-signing a sister city agreement with them. And then today, met with the economic development team from Excel Energy. I think, once we get, we continue to build a relationship with this team, I think it's going to provide to build incredible dividends for the city in the economic development ring. So that is my report. I'll take any questions. If not, we can move on to city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor?
What's that?
Oh. You have an appointment? I would move your approval on your appointment.
Second.
Moved and approved. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Jumping ahead of myself. Thank you, Lisa. Now, let's move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council, not a lot to report this evening. I did want to highlight, even though it's addressed in my city manager memo, last week, staff and I did hold two Ask Me Anything sessions online. We took questions in advance as well as live during the program. This is an opportunity to hopefully engage with the public in a different way and help them understand and ask questions and educate themselves on the budget and what's incorporated in it, what it means. So we, the first one was with the two chiefs, the police chief and the fire chief, as well as myself. And then we had a general government one. We'll have another one tomorrow with regards to public works and engineering. So again, encourage the public to engage with that process. Those are recorded and they are posted to our website as well. So if you missed either of those, you're welcome to watch those. And as always, staff is open for questions for any of the public at any time, so they're welcome to reach out. And in no way is that to circumvent the public process that the council goes through. So everyone is still encouraged to reach out to staff or the council with regards to any questions or concerns with the proposed budgets. And I look forward to the deliberation of the council here over the next few weeks as you finalize the fiscal year 2023 budget. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has with regard to the report.
Any questions, city manager? If not, let's move on to item five, Consider the Report at the Planning Commission, 5.1, Public Hearing to Rezone of 1134 18th Street Northwest, 18th Street and adjoining unaddressed property. This is a time for public comment, whether you're for or against the rezone. So at this time, I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody here? Comment? If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mark?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item as recommended.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Roscoe. Any discussion? No discussion? Call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley? Evans?
Yes.
Moving on to consent items, we have a total of 16 items, and we have been asked, or I've been asked to pull three items. So we are going to pull 6.12, 6.13, and 6.15 for discussion. With the remaining, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval on the remaining items.
We have a motion to approve the remaining items. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley? Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Moving on to 6.12, the Intersection Traffic Control Review for Downtown Minnetonka. It was asked to be pulled by a couple of the council members. Carrie?
So I'm going to make a motion to approve it, but, and get a second, and then we'll have a discussion.
Second.
Thank you. I wonder if our traffic engineer can come up and stand for some questions? Hello? So this is great. I'm glad that we studied some of these intersections and are adding some four-way stops. You mentioned in the memo, three other intersections, downtown, First Street and Third Avenue, First Street and Central, and Second Street and Second Avenue, as sort of under evaluation. Tell me what the plan is and what that is going to look like.
Mayor, Ross, Alderman, Evans. Let's just jump back for a little bit. We, just to give a broad overview, we reviewed every single intersection downtown, whether that's, if it's already a two-way stop, four-way stop, and whether we should change that or keep it the same. Three of them were already all-way stops. I'm going to say three of them were on the fence of moving, converting from an all-way, or from a two-way stop to an all-way. We think with a little more growth, a little more activity, they would reach that standpoint for that. I don't know if that answered your question.
So is there any, so is there any plans for these three intersections? Like, I've heard something about bump outs or something. Is that going to be going on? Tell me more about that.
So at East Central and First Street Southeast, there's been a lot of pedestrian activity increased over the past few years there. So what we're going to do is do some painted bump outs, you know, similar to Main Street where we got the concrete bump outs.
And what are those for people who have no idea?
So the bump out is kind of a curb extension. The premise behind it is for pedestrian safety, to kind of shorten the gap across the street. You know, if there's a vehicle, pedestrian accident, the pedestrian is going to get the bulk of the damage there. So it's pedestrian improvement. The painted bump out versus the concrete bump out, it's a lot cheaper. It's more of a visual deterrent than a physical barrier with that. So we're trying to improve safety with that. We kind of wanted to see how the painted bump out would work. If it works great, great. If we need to improve on that and convert that to an all-way stop, we can certainly do that as well.
And that's for that one intersection? The other two are just, you're going to continue studying?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll keep an eye on them.
Would it be reasonable for you to like come back before, like, let's say, the end of the calendar year and just give us sort of the initial impressions of the bump outs and the other two intersections, and if it's, you know, your recommendation to do something further there or not? Just, I know some downtown folks, both businesses and pedestrians and even motorists have, you know, been worried about some of these intersections. So I just want them to know that, you know, we're not just, yeah, we'll evaluate them, that there's a time to that.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. End of the year is totally fine. I would like to see how the painted bump out works and waiting until the end of the year kind of gives us the fall.
That'd be enough time for you?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Yes.
Just to come and thanking the traffic engineer for looking at this seriously. It's something I've been concerned about. Although I'm not an engineer or human factor psychologist, I try to pay attention to my environment, and those downtown intersections are very busy. There's a lot going on in your field of view, and it's not clear who's supposed to stop and who's not supposed to stop. So I really appreciate you following up on that and putting the signs up that say, you know, traffic, which direction does or doesn't stop, and then moving to four-way stops, which I think would improve things. So I appreciate you taking that into consideration.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? If not, call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Moving on to 6.13, Public Works Cooling Tower Repair Budget Amendment. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Do we have to have a motion before discussion? We have to have a motion before a discussion.
What if I want to make a motion to decline it?
Make that motion.
I make a motion to decline it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Steve. Discussion?
Thank you. This is the second consecutive meeting now that a request has been brought for a budget item. This is a super small one, so it's not the point of the money. It's the point that there's, in both cases, there's been money, plenty of money in other budget line items to cover this without coming to the council. For example, well, it'd probably have to come to the council for us to move it. But for example, the healthcare budget line item, in engineering, there's 109,000 left in that budget. There's been 83 expended year-to-date, with 192, 791 is the budget allocation. So if you do the math on that, there is, you know, projected to be 60,000 extra in this budget line item unless someone were to get hired the next two, three, four weeks. But even at that, you'd still have much. So my motion would be to take the money from that budget item because it will not be expended by the end of the year unless there was multiple employees hired and then some, and use that to pay for it.
Any other comments? Carrie?
Mr. Lakefield, could you come up and just tell us if the logistics of that is possible?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's essentially how things will shake out in the long run. If we take money from reserves and appropriate the funds in the line item that is needed to do this repair, essentially what would happen at the end of the year when those other line items aren't expended, those funds go back into reserves. So it's just a matter of semantics and how it's accomplished. We certainly can update the budget amendment to move the items from one line item to another. We still have to appropriate the funds in the correct budget account.
Well, Ms. Mayor, I think the point is, instead of coming for, they should be looking at these line items that they know are going to be back and transferring money between it without having to go through this process.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Striley, we would still have to have the budget amendment to increase the appropriation in the correct line item.
So is the budget, so when you talk about reserves and stuff, are we talking about that the public works, right? It's not coming out of general reserves, right? It's coming out of the public works reserves? Like, it's all within that world?
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, I believe in this budget amendment, it's being charged to engineering, which is a general fund department. So it would hit general fund.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. No further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Steve.
Sorry. Thank you. Although I'm not going to be supporting the motion, I wanted to point out that Alderwoman Evans and I separately have raised questions about reserve accounts and funding and how much is in them and how much should be in them. So that's something, that's a concern that I share. And I've asked the city manager in a very lengthy memo I sent in, I guess it was yesterday, which he's promised an answer to, a lot of detailed questions, and this is one of them. I'd like to be more knowledgeable about that and also how the funds are transferred. So although, again, I'm going to oppose this, I do share the concern about, interest in the mechanics of how this happens on a regular basis. And Alderwoman Evans has previously expressed, I think, similar sentiments. So.
Thank you, Steve. Mark?
Can I get a clarification of what the motion is that we're?
The motion is to decline the budget amendment from reserves?
Okay.
Carol?
If I may, Mr. Mayor and council, just for some clarity. So last council meeting, Alderman Striley did express some concern with regards to budget amendments with something being amended after the fact, after it's already been repaired. So staff has tried to be proactive in this case. This repair has not been completed, and we've been without air conditioning at the public works facility since mid-July, and the part isn't to arrive until September. So we are trying to be responsive to Alderman Striley's concerns and issues. I think what we're talking about here is the process of a budget amendment. And I will say that we have a lot of budget amendments here in this community, which is more than I'm used to in previous communities. But I think this is regulated by the ordinances and what council has directed staff on how to handle these budget amendments. Typically, in most communities I've been in, there is some degree of leeway in these budgets for staff to make these changes, as council member Striley has suggested, potentially, if I understand what he's saying. But at the end of the day, though, if this motion passes as made, staff would cancel the repair because we wouldn't have approval from the council to proceed with that. And we have some employees that have been pretty uncomfortable here for a few weeks, doing everything we can to try and cool the building. So.
Obviously, I'm not against that. It's the process this is done under is what I'm disputing.
Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if this motion passes, Alderman Striley, do you intend on making a new motion to take it from a different budget line item?
Alderwoman Olson, yes. I just think that this shouldn't even be here. This should be a transfer between funds is my biggest argument, I guess.
Thank you.
No other comments? Please call the roll.
Striley? Evans?
No.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
No.
Ross?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. 6.15.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need a new.
Oh, we need a new motion. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval on this item.
Lisa moves to approve. Is there a second? Second by Paul? Any discussion?
Just, just to maybe point a clarification. On the previous motion, could it have been presented to deny the funding source and suggest a new one? Suggested from the cost savings from healthcare within the department, or?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, if I understand correctly, and maybe Mr. Lakefield can answer this question, I don't believe staff has the authority to just transfer money from one budget line item to another. It's under the council direction that any of those transfers require a budget amendment that come to council for approval. So I don't, I don't, I don't think that staff would be doing what council has directed in your financial policies by shifting these monies around. I'm not opposed to it in concept, but that isn't the policy and the direction that council has given to staff previously. But I'll let Mr. Lakefield clarify that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and I don't have the language of the ordinance right in front of me, but the language is that the appropriation can't be exceeded, and it references by line item. So that's why we need to do the budget amendment to increase the appropriation for that line item. The source of the funding, I think we can take that regardless. It would still require a budget amendment to clearly appropriation for that particular line item. We can take it from any fund or any other line item or from reserves, however we want to fund that. This is something that we've had a lot of discussion of in the last few years as we worked through this new ERP system and how we group those accounts into categories. And some of our thought processes is we want to have some flexibility built into our system so that we could have some ability to move funding with like categories. But on the other hand, we didn't think that it was appropriate or fair and definitely wouldn't follow within the current ordinance to move funds from a completely unrelated category such as, let's say, salary savings from a vacant position and use it to buy some type of equipment or functions. We didn't think that that was appropriate. That wasn't what the funding was originally budgeted for. That wasn't what the council approved in the budget amendment. So even though we think we could use some updates to the ordinance, and we certainly can look at that and address that to build in some flexibility, we want to be a little bit cautious so we don't have it wide open either.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Lakefield, yeah, that's my point. I mean, there needs to be a little bit of flexibility here, I think, on that. And the other thing I'm concerned about going forward, if these budget items get, now, the repair and maintenance line is higher. So the next year, I mean, obviously, next year's already done, but next year's budget now, is that going to get built into the base going forward to sneak up the base on these items? I mean, that's where this stuff happens. And, you know, yeah, I'd like some flexibility.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, typically, we look at more than just the prior year. We look at four or five years of historical data, and we try to sort out anomalies that may have occurred in there. You know, if we look back two years or three years, and, you know, it's obvious that we had several years that are fairly consistent, and all of a sudden, we have a blip on the radar. We try to account for that. Obviously, that's somewhat of a manual process, and somebody has to interpret that data. But we do try to take that into account when we prepare the budgets.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Not call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Moving on to 6.15, Retail Coach Contract Extension. We have a motion.
I move.
Second.
We have a motion by Janser to approve. We got a second by Paul. Discussion. Roscoe, I think you're the one who asked Paul.
Yeah, what's been the effectiveness of this, I guess? Do we have any data to prove that this is working, or it's a valid program? Is this needed? To me, it seems like it's not needed.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Striley, first, it's a year old, and we've made reports to the city council. Is this working properly? Am I heard properly? Thank you. We've made reports, you're new, and amongst the things that we've reported is that we are working on a, because of our meetings and our attendance at the International Shopping Center show, that we are working to attract and actively discussing a membership-based warehouse club coming here. We've done a number of food places. I won't elaborate on specifics if I, we avoid talking about our specific tenants for reasons that you may lose somebody if you declare who they are.
But we've looked at some national shoe outlets. The one that's, the big one here is the warehouse organization. So they spend a day here looking at sites. Right after our meeting in Las Vegas with them, we met with them for about an hour, which is a pretty good amount of time, given the number of people who attend that conference to, to spend that time. But there's a lot of base work that goes into that, that there's a reason why it's more expensive the first year, less expensive with follow-on. I had written a summary on this, but, and I'd be happy to share it with you in written form, but you're the one person who hasn't had a chance to look at this being.
I guess my basic question is, if these big boxes are going to come here, they're going to know it well before we are. They have better analytics, better idea of where they're going than we would. What is this, is it just a consultant you're hiring? What, what is it specifically?
No, they're a consultant, but they don't, they don't necessarily know the location without us. They're not, I mean, they're looking at a whole country. They are not necessarily looking directly at us and saying, well, we decided to go to Minot. We're paying attention. Look at us. We're Minot. We've got something going for you, and we have to have something to put under their nose. It's more than just under the nose, you know, for something for them to analyze. And that comes, there are two things that they do. They provide data that's very important, but they also have contacts. And they get a return phone call where we very well may not. There, like I said, it's a big country, and they're able to help us break through that, and they've done that. But we're looking to continue that, and we think that it has been successful. This is not, as these things go, particularly expensive. I, I know it all counts, but it's, it's not, you know, I've worked with people. I just can tell you, it's just, it's not that much money.
If I may, Mr. Mayor and Alderman Strile. So this was a, an option that I proposed to the council when I first came in, and, and there's a couple of aspects and reasons for it. Number one is these, these retail businesses have become almost a quality of life issue in most communities. When you're talking about trying to recruit doctors and nurses or satisfaction of Airman Wilder Station here at the airbase, as well as just our local citizens, we hear a lot of time about interest in why can't we get such-and-such national brand in Minot and those kinds of things. And so what this company does is they analyze cell phone and credit card data, and then they use that data to analyze what money is leaving our region and being spent in surrounding communities, as well as what money is coming into our region and being spent on what. And then what is the fiscal capacity in different demographics of the retail space that we have needs to be met? And then they take that data and use their contacts from doing developments across the country to understanding the business plans of these different retail companies that when those analytics hit a point that meets the business plan of one of those companies, then they reach out to their contacts and say, hey, here's some data. This meets your business plan. We think you should consider a location in Minot, North Dakota. I agree with Mr. Rosenthal that not always are they looking aggressively for that. Sometimes they're waiting for communities to come talk to them. In addition, all of their analytics, we provide to the community as a whole through a dashboard on our website. So you can go through and review that and read that. And we do that for multiple reasons. One is because we never know what retail company may be looking at our website, and without that website, as they're doing their due diligence, if it's not there and it's not easily accessible, they go on to the next community that does. So it gives us competitive advantage. Two is that we incorporated in the RFP specifically to help use this data for our existing businesses within our community, including the downtown area. So we had a meeting, was it January of last year?
February.
February, where we met with downtown business owners and began talking about that this data was available and promised a follow-up meeting that they would come back and Retail Coach would work with them on how they could strengthen their existing businesses. So it isn't just about recruiting retail in. It's also about providing data to help our existing businesses make decisions so that they can succeed and grow and be more successful. And so that's the reasoning of this. It does take a little bit of time. It's not like you can start it and do it for one year, and all of a sudden, you're going to land five businesses. A lot of times, these relationships are built and talked about over a course of two to three to four years. I think this first year has been extremely successful. We have provided reports to the council. I think there's one included here underneath the city manager report this evening. It doesn't include names, as confidentiality is important. We, they're negotiating purchases of property and, you know, different kinds of things if, if they're moving forward, and we, we kind of wait for them to make those decisions and get it all in place, and then they make their own public announcement. But I think for the first year, this has been very successful, as Mr. Rosenthal talked about. You know, we have a, a membership warehouse that is very interested in Minot, and it comes directly from this contract and this relationship that we have that, should that come to fruition, will be a great enhancement to our community and will secure our strength as a regional draw and decrease some of our loss to communities like Bismarck and others that have those membership warehouses that we do not have. The other issue is, is that as we talk about trying to minimize property tax and those kinds of things, that means we need to recruit and grow our base and especially our sales tax base. So focusing on this retail recruitment translates directly into potential future sales tax revenues, aside of all the quantitative, or, sorry, the qualitative benefits that come from having a healthier, more vibrant retail space within the city limits of Minot.
Thank you, Harold. Paul? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're pointing at me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I sort of had a problem with this last year, and I still sort of, this doesn't sit very well with me. I really, I mean, our labor market is, we know what it's like in the city, and trying to attract larger employers, big boxes, you know, is already putting pressure on a labor market that our local and existing businesses are fighting for employees in, and it concerns me that, you know, we are actively working to attract entities that are going to need lots of employees, and we can't even, you know, fill the, the current jobs. And, you know, the companies, from my understanding, that we are pursuing are, you know, sort of the wealth mining companies that draw directly from our local businesses. And it's sort of hard for me to use local money to recruit and subsidize this, you know, taking of money away from our local businesses. I know part of it is the Retail Coach meeting with downtown and coaching and supporting, and it's, you know, sort of, I think, been given some lip service. I would like to see that actually happening and be as important to the contract as, you know, the recruitment of the warehouse clubs and all of that is. We have existing, you know, businesses that the Retail Coach, I think, can be very helpful for. And, you know, yearly check-ins with different entities, you know, is not what I think is expected for the use of all of this money. So those are just my concerns.
Thank you, Carrie. Steve, did you have anything?
Yes. I also share a little bit of skepticism about these activities, but I, I'm going to be supportive of this. The things that jump out at me are a little bit different. First of all, I think this is data-based, and as a, as a scientist, as a psychologist, I like to look at data, and that shouldn't rule everything, but I think it's important. And it seems that increasingly, American business is trying to make decisions based on data. So if we can present data to people to catch their attention and to hook them, if you will, to encourage them to spend more time looking at us, I think that's a good thing. The second thing, excuse me, is that this is a significant change from how we've been trying to do economic development for many years. I think in the old days, we tried to develop personal contacts with CEOs. We would take somebody on a hunting trip or buy them a shotgun or whatever, take them golfing. And I think there is some value in developing those personal relationships. But I think this is, this is very different in the past couple of years, and I think that's a very positive change. I think the old ways of doing things need to be supplemented. And I think the third thing that I'm attracted to is this notion of coaching, of coaching our current businesses. I know there is competition. I happen to believe, that's my value, that a rising tide raises all boats. It may make things a little bit challenging for current employers, but that's the nature of our free enterprise capitalist system. You know, and hopefully, if there are enough jobs here, maybe people will be motivated to move here. So I'm not terribly worried about that. But I like the idea of helping local businesses. I was reading the report, for example. It's contained with our agenda this month, and it pointed out that a lot of businesses, or a lot of sales happen on Sundays and after six o'clock. And that if you're a small business person downtown, you really should think carefully, when are you open for business? Now, for religious or other reasons, you choose not to be open Sunday, that's fine. But then you realize that there's a downside to that, and you also know now that there are certain hours of being open that are more likely to benefit in terms of sales. Also, one of the other themes in the report that we got was that merchants need to work together. It needs to be a critical mass, whether it's in the restaurant field or the retail field, and people need to make it easier for customers and clients and patrons to shop and eat and whatever. So I think this notion of developing a critical mass and working together is very important. I think people are starting to do more of that downtown, particularly in some of the eating establishments. So I, I think this is a very good way to get started. I know it may take a while to see concrete progress, but again, I think this is a novel approach. I think it's based on a reasonably good understanding of how American business tries to operate, and I think it also facilitates and enhances the activities of people who are taking chances here in town already, who are trying to be entrepreneurs. It gives them a better chance of, of success. So for all those reasons, I think we should stick with this. Ten years down the road, if we haven't gotten the Chick-fil-A or the Red Lobster, whatever, yeah, maybe we should pull the plug. But I think right now, this is certainly worth trying, especially compared to what we've been doing in the past. I see this as a significant improvement.
Thank you, Steve. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm gonna, I think everybody's got valid concerns and valid points, but I don't think the labor shortage is unique to anywhere else in the country. I mean, if we're going to have these opportunities and these businesses come in, and, and we have a labor shortage just as much as the other places, and so be it. I mean, I don't think it's something that we should pull back on, but it is a concern, and I, and I respect that. They may come here, these, these entities, these businesses, these, these different places might come here eventually. But if we get out in front of it, and they're here for extra five years or 10 years prior to when they would come here on their own, then, then I think that's something worth investing in. It's not a heck of a lot of money to get out in front of this and diversify our, our approach to economic development and, and leaving it to one entity or, or to just find us. So again, I support it. I think it takes more time than a year, but it is one of those things that we will have to see some dividends paid from it. Otherwise, it, it won't be a good investment, maybe in a year or two years. But as of right now, I'm going to support this, and, and again, I think it's a, I think it is a, a novel approach, and I think it's a good approach, and it diversifies us being aggressive in our, in our own future. So.
Anyone else? Jonathan or Harold, if you can, you know, Steve mentioned concrete results. Harold, if you've used this, this concept or this group before in other communities, what, what kind of timeline did it take to, to see some concrete results?
Well, we used it in the previous community I was in, in Warrensburg, Missouri. It took a couple of years to get it going. We had some small wins. We had, we were able to recruit in a smaller market sporting goods store. We were able to take a building that, actually, the foundation had been poured, and we had the, the steel beams for building the frame, and it all died. I think the plan was, years before, was to build a bowling alley, and it all fell apart, and then it sat there for probably 10, 15, 20 years with no progress, almost similar to your in-building downtown. And then partnering with Retail Coach, we were able to get in that small market sporting goods store. Unfortunately, though, that also went bankrupt within about six months, but the building was there that we could then market, and then they were able to get in a Marshalls into that, into that market. We were successful in getting a Culvers, different things. But probably one of the bigger wins was we had difficulty with grocery market. We didn't have a, a good tier grocery market provider, and it took probably, actually, I, I started with Retail Coach when I first got there. I'm trying to get that in place. And by the way, the city of Warrensburg already had the relationship with Retail Coach before I got there. That was my first interaction with them. I hadn't worked with them previous to that. But we started immediately to try and get a new grocery market in there. And I think probably about six months after I started with the city of Minot, they finally opened up a Hy-Vee grocery store. So that was a five-year effort to get that one win, and continues to be dividends paid in that community now. For full disclosure, the city of Warrensburg here also recently this year ended their contract with Retail Coach and went with another competitor. But the model works. I mean, you can change what company you want to work with, but the model works. And again, coming out of the gate here, I think Retail Coach has done a good job of laying the foundation, getting us off to the right direction, and we've got some pretty major potential successes on the near horizon, even with only been doing it for about a year. So I would ask for the council to give it at least another year or two, and if after that, if you don't feel like you have the success that you're looking for, for the return on investment, then I'll support that decision.
Thank you, Harold. Any other comments? Not call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padragula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Strile? Evans?
Yes.
Moving on to action items. 7.1, City Hall Rehabilitation Furniture Award of Bid. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Moved by Lisa. Is there a second? Second by Roscoe. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padragula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Strile?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
7.2, Paving District Final Payment and BA. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Who was that? Paul? Motion to approve? Is that Roscoe you second? Roscoe second. Any discussion? No discussion? Call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padragula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Strile?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on, 7.3, Approval of Bill Funding Application and Award of Bid for Runway Pavement Marking Project. What are the wishes of the council?
I move approval.
Moved by Janser. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Padragula. Any discussion? No discussion? Call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padragula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Strile? Evans?
Yes.
7.4, Apply or Application for a Placemaking Grant. Wishes of the council.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Carrie, second by Paul. Any discussion? No discussion? Call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padragula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Strile?
Moving on to 7.5, Recycling Program Structure. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Moved by Lisa. Is there a second? Second by Janser. Any discussion?
Can I have Jason come answer some questions?
Absolutely.
I think I saw him out there. We're getting there, Jason, on this. Okay, so what we're going to be doing is, we're going to stick with a one-time opt-out. So residents will have the option before bins are distributed to opt-out with the city. We're going to go every two weeks. How, so let's say it blows up and everybody in the community is recycling. How, how much time would it take? Let's say if we started in August of 2023, and in October, it's just everybody's recycling. How quickly could we move to make that weekly if we needed to?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Evans, really quickly, because right now, we're, we're currently doing twice-a-week collection for all residences. So it's just, right now, we're just replacing one day every other week, so we can just do one day every week. So.
Okay, so we wouldn't have a big, lengthy process?
No.
And then we would start with excluding glass. How difficult or not difficult would it be, again, you know, if the market changes in 2024 and glass all of a sudden becomes hot? 2024 and glass all of a sudden becomes hot, that we could add that to the materials we collected?
You know, not difficult at all. The, probably the hard part is, you know, basically retraining the citizens' behavior. You know, if you go down a path and you get them trained over the course of, you know, one, two, three years of throwing glass away, and then now telling, you know, it's, it's just a, a retraining exercise. But it's, it's as simple as just putting it in the same bin and hauling it to the same contractors before, so.
And I'm assuming we would do, like, a yearly, annual, yearly just evaluation of all the materials we're collecting, you know, something has changed, you know, taking something away, adding something in, that it's just like, this is not the list forever.
Definitely. I mean, you, you know, there, there's, in any recycling stream, there's, there's high-value commodities and there's low-value commodities. So you want that mix to be as valuable as possible on the other end, so.
Fantastic. Thank you. I appreciate all the work you're doing to get this moving forward and, you know, rolling out the program in 2023.
My pleasure.
Steve?
Thank you. I'm not gonna complain about you practicing psychology without a license and talking about changing people's behavior and training them. But the one complaint I do have is this issue of only a 95-gallon cart. Now, I've brought this up before, and we've talked about it on many occasions. That's one thing I'm not comfortable with. The major concern and objection I have to people isn't really the cost or even the philosophy of recycling. It's the notion that a, a large bin like that really doesn't have any place on their property or in their garage or wherever. This has been brought up in particular by people who live in condo areas, where the condo rules prohibit leaving any containers outside. And yet condos, they've often moved into because they didn't want to or weren't able to have a full-scale, single-family home. So they've downsized, their garage tends to be much smaller, and they're prohibited from keeping a container outside. And they've mentioned it would be real hardship. And also people who may not be as physically fit as others. So that's the one part of it I'm concerned about. And I really would like to ask you to, to offer the option of the 65-gallon container. I do accept, based on what you've told me, the proposition that most people will go for the 95-gallon one, and that there are problems if you use the, the small, the 35-gallon one in terms of the containers emptying. But I really, really would like to see people have a choice in a slightly smaller container. I personally don't know where I would find room for it. And I think you'll have more acceptance and fewer complaints from people if you give them that choice. I know it may be a little bit more work for city staff, and maybe things aren't quite as clean. But I, from what I'm hearing from people, it would really be useful if they had the option for a smaller container. And I'd like that, that to be considered.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Padrigula, we, we talked about this earlier today, and it's, 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 it's an extra step for us when we have to survey the public again. In the end, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a process we can go through, and if, if that's a wish of the council. I guess I would point out, I, I, I don't have the exact square inches, but I think when you look at how much, how many square inches a 95 takes versus how many square inches a 65 takes, I think they're very, very close to one another. The difference is more in height. But like I said, it's, it's a, it's an, it's a easy thing for us to fit into our program. We, we have a lot of surplus 65s currently that we can reuse for recycling, so we can, we can make that change if you want.
I have one more comment. And this is a good time to remind, you know, customers of, of trash, right? Is that we, every Minot resident can, once a year for free, ask for a change in size of their trash cans. So if you've had kids move out, or your household gets bigger, you know, you can call anytime and ask for them. There could be a charge, right? If it's, you're doing it like 10 times a year.
Correct.
But, you know, I think people forget about that. And as their circumstances change, or they move into a house that, you know, maybe has a 95, and they're like, I'm just alone, I need a 35. So for residents who want to do that, they just call Public Works, right, to make that request, or the Patient Portal as well? Patient Portal?
Yeah.
You know what I use. But you know what I mean, the thing on the city website?
That's correct. It's, it's a very simple process, very painless.
Right. And then the same will be true, will we do that with recycling? Like if, like, let's say, a senior citizen says, you know, in 2024, the 95 is just too much for me, garbage and recycling. Will maybe have some additional options at that point?
Correct. That, you know, I don't, I don't see why, if we're gonna offer a, a, a change in container size for garbage, why we wouldn't allow it for recycling as well?
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Roscoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you give us a total of what you got in inventory, excess inventory in each? Because I'm assuming once this takes place, the garbage, obviously, the goal is to reduce that. So, you know, we're gonna have more people switching over to the 65s, and are you gonna have them different colors? Or, I mean, obviously, I wasn't here for the discussion and the approval to actually do this, but just some thoughts, I guess.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Striley, currently, we have very few 35s and probably in the neighborhood of about 1,065s. Those are people that have upsized from a 65 to a 95 since our initial rollout. And then we have some 95s on hand because that's what people have been requesting the most of. So that's, that's pretty much where they sit. Once we go to recycling, those 65s could be repurposed as, as recycling containers, if that's a wish of the council. Basically, you know, we're gonna stick with the tan cans that we currently have, and we're just gonna have a different lid color for recycling versus trash.
Anything else? Any other comments, questions? Lisa?
This is slightly related, but I, I think it, it might address some of Alderman Padrigula's concerns as well. For individuals who cannot move the can for themselves, they can pay an extra fee and have staff come to their garage and, and pull the can out, correct?
Mayor Ross, Alderwoman Olson, yeah, they, they can do that. It's, it's a no charge, though. Basically, we just ask, you know, if someone is, you know, has a disability, that they go to their doctor and just get a doctor's note saying that they're incapable of, of making, moving that container, and then we provide that valet service for them. I think to date, we have about 180 in the community that utilize that service.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything further? If not, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, Personal Appearances. This is an opportunity for you, anybody who has an issue or question or comment or concern, to step up and address to the council. Please state your name and...
I'm Marjorie Taylor. I live at 616 17th Avenue Southwest. And the reason I'm here is I'd like your assistance in making this a, a safe place for the children to cross the school to get to Edison. Currently, they've placed three no-parking signs between Sixth Street and Seventh Street, and the hours are between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., no parking. Well, currently, the people that are dropping their children off in the morning and picking them up at night, they, they park in the no parking. The ones at the end of the school day, they come a half an hour early and they start banking up in front of the no parking signs until it's solid all the way down the street, and they teach their children how to jaywalk. And very few of them get out of the car and take their children across the street at the crosswalk. So it's just, it's cotton-picking chaos. And so I'm asking your assistants to get the Minot Police Department to, to set up a routine so they come and start policing that and putting out some no, some parking tickets. And they can make a lot of money off of jaywalking there, too. But I have exhausted myself. I've talked to the principal, and it's not their problem there because it's not on school property, and the city has placed their signs there. So it's not their problem anymore. They've done their thing for safety. We had the street widened when they did their last addition, and so they removed the boulevard on the south side of the avenue, so there's room for another car to park on that side and still have room for the traffic to flow. But once they start plugging up the street with all of the cars in the no parking, it, it's just chaos. And I did contact the Minot Police Department numerous times. And then you become the pest caller, and they put you in to hold heaven and wait for the desk sergeant to be able to get free time to talk to you. And they don't have the time or the resources to take care of this. So I'm just suggesting that somehow you find the resources to get some people up there to, it's not gonna take that many times, because once you give these people a ticket or a warning, they'll be aware that they're not gonna be able to park there. But presently, they think they are entitled to park there because they are dropping their children off or picking them up. And I spoke to one of the police officers that came on, on site, and he pulled up and parked in front of the no parking sign and sat there. So I was curious. I got him to roll down his passenger window and asked him if he was here to do something about this parking problem. And he wasn't. He thought it was, that these people, it's not a problem, because it only, it does, it's only a couple hours a day, and nobody's gotten hurt there yet, as far as he knew. But I, I do, I, I, I think there have been several children hurt there. I know there have. But he wasn't aware of that. And so finally, he sat there for a while in front of that no parking sign. Finally, like, the lights came on, and he pulled around and parked on Seventh Street. But this guy was here, there to teach the children at Edison School about bicycle safety. So, but he didn't think there was any problem with people parking in front of the no parking signs, or that they're, they're entitled to do that. And that's with the people that park there. I've spoken to those people. I, I've, this one fellow, it was grandpa, and he was in a brand, brand-new Cadillac Escalade, and he parked right in front. So he was blocking the view of the crosswalk totally. And I, I went up and I, I asked him if he, you know, you know you're parked in front of a no parking sign. He didn't care. He was there just to pick up his grandkids. And he said, call the cops. They won't do anything anyway. So that's the attitude of the people that are parking there. And it's causing a, it's a concern to me. I don't want to even look out there in the morning or in the afternoon. It's just, it's, my, my dad was a teacher in the Minot School System. His job was with, in the driver's ed department. He was instrumental in getting the motorcycle safety courses going here in town. So I've had a safety, driver's ed, Rules of the Road 101 pounded into me from when I was a kid. And so this just grates on me to have this go on. And there is gonna be a child hurt, seriously, because they, they jump out between cars. It's, it's nuts. And the parents, it's under their approval. So we need to have, I need to have your assistance to somehow find the funding to get some, some traffic control there. Or if they can hire a person to direct these little children across the street. Because the doors that are out in front of my house, those are the first and second graders going in that end by the playground. And if we don't start teaching those little children Rules of the Road, and their parents need a refresher course in Rules of the Road, this will be a very unsafe place. And they've put in that sidewalk from Seventh Street clear over to 16th Street. This is for pedestrian safety. So we just need to kick it up a notch here and take care of it the rest of the way from Sixth Street to Seventh Street, and enforce there's no parking, so we do have a safer place for those children to ca, to, to cross. So... And I have a letter here from, from the neighbor, Carol Anderson. She lives to the east of me. And I did speak to the other neighbors that are Henry and Renee. And both of them, their, their opinion is, if nobody's gonna enforce those no parking signs, please remove them. Because that, Carol and Jim Anderson, they don't have the street, and like, we're, there's three houses on the end there. So we don't, we could park on Seventh Street, our, our visitors can park over there, and the other neighbor on Sixth Street. But the Andersons, they, they have to tell their, their friends to park somewhere else. They can't park in front of their house. But the people that are coming to drop their kids off, they can park there. So, anyway, here's that letter, and I drew a sketch here of what's going on here. Because this is something I think needs to be addressed, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So can I give this letter to City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Carrie.
Could I, Harold, would it be possible, I mean, to at least just sort of have a, you have a quick, like, with the traffic engineer, maybe police, and just seeing if there's anything that, you know, city resources, that we can do better as a city to help ameliorate this, or anything like that?
This is something that Chief Klug and I can meet and discuss.
Okay.
We'll include Lance, the traffic engineer. I think we also need the school district at the table to talk about this. I'm gonna go out on a limb here, although I don't think it's a dangerous limb to go out, and I would say that this probably doesn't happen just at Edison.
Right.
It's probably at all the schools across the community. So it's not just providing resources for this one area. This would be a comprehensive approach that would need to be taken, which would take some considerable resources to be able to do that, as well some partnership, probably between the city and the school district, to handle that. But I think it's a valid concern. I, I live next to Edison. I have a daughter that goes to Edison Elementary, so definitely very interested in making sure it's safe. She walks to school every day and back. So it's a real concern, but at the same time, it is gonna be very resource-intensive to try and address across the community.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? If not, we'll move on to miscellaneous and discussion items. Carrie?
Oh, oh, are we gonna start with this, or are we gonna do the council presidents? I can just go last, that'll be fine.
Okay, all right. Let's move on to Council President's Letter of Recommendation on the 2023 Budget. Paul?
Don't know, I, I guess... Do people want me to read it? Or, we've all had a chance to take a look at it. I guess I would feel any questions from it. I can, I can maybe go over the highlights of, of my recommendation. And, and again, I'll start out by thanking staff and, and Harold under your leadership, and Dave, under your financial guise, to put this budget together and present it to us. Again, I, I'll, I'll give you the highlights of, of my recommendation. Number one was removal of grounds, building a grounds worker. And my justification for that was, a lot of the justification for that position was tied to maintenance, ongoing maintenance of the parking structures downtown and, and maintaining those. I think at this point, the council has to have a frank discussion and, and look at what the future of those parking structures is. Are we gonna maintain them? Are we gonna keep them? Are we gonna sell them? Are we gonna look for a developer to come in and build something on top of them? So again, I think that's a position that, again, I think is warranted, but maybe we can buy some time on and see the direction of those parking structures going forward. There's a drug task force officer position presented to us. And I asked city staff how many open positions there were within the police department and right now, um, with vacancies as well as, um, upcoming resignations, retirements, whatnot. Standing at about a 10, about 10 open positions. The drug task force officer is an officer within the department and, and Chief Klug can correct me if I'm wrong. This will be an existing officer that will be appointed to the drug task force for a period of time. And then a new entry level officer position will be posted once that officer goes to the task force. If, if Chief Klug feels that he has the resources to appoint a drug task force officer, I, I fully support that. I think it's an important role. Um, I think it's an important organization in our community and they do really good work. So again, I would support that. I can't support adding another officer position when we have 10. We haven't been able to fill them. We continue to tax citizens for those positions we haven't been able to fill. There still will be seven approximate positions within the department to be filled to, uh, to alleviate some of the overtime. And, and at the end of the year, when these funds aren't allocated and these positions aren't filled, they go back into the general fund. They help cover things like overtime, uh, for our police department. I think if those seven positions are filled, I'll be the first one to raise my hand and, and make a budget amendment to add more positions within the police department. And you'll see later on in this, in my letter, I recommended setting some of the cost savings within this budget and then within this recommendation towards, um, the future of this building or police headquarters, wherever that may be. Maybe it's building a new building. Maybe it's refurbishing this one. But I want to be mindful of that large expense, that it will be a large expense. Whether we build new or renovate this building, we're looking at millions of dollars. And I think we need to be mindful of that on the horizon and, and start setting money aside for it today. One of the other recommendations within it was, um, something that we were told to consider. It wasn't, um, anything that was presented in this budget, but was the, um, the two electrical inspector positions. And I want to be very clear on this. There is a cost savings to the city by working with the state. And we'll see further in the agenda that by eliminating these positions, we're going against staff recommendation. And I'm very mindful of that and I, and I take it very serious. I've had conversations, I've been in a meeting with the state electrical inspectors, uh, city leadership with Luke, part of the, the head of the building department. I've had a one-on-one conversation with Luke and he's expressed his concerns with letting go of this to the state and not having oversight within his department. And I respect that. However, um, when looking at the cost savings, looking at the duplication of services that's provided, I'm willing to give it a try. And, and by that, I, when I approach this decision to, to recommend removing the two electrical inspectors, electrical inspector positions, I, I view it as a trial run. Give it a year. And if the state doesn't realize, and we don't realize that this is an opportunity for both entities, not only the city, to have the state take over this and, and, and have some cost savings to taxpayers, but it's also the state's opportunity to come in and work in the city of Minot and provide this service to our residents. And it would be my recommendation, it would be my number one budget priority next year that if the state does not meet and if not exceed the exceptional level of service that Luke and his staff have created and our citizens have come to expect from that department, I'll be the first one to say we need to implement two more electoral inspectors or at least an electoral, electoral inspector in the city of Minot. If it takes six months and it goes sideways, I'll be the first one to offer a budget amendment to get electoral inspector back on staff. So, um, those are the highlights. There's, there's cost savings found within the budget. Again, I think we've all been beaten over the head with the, the fact that one of the number one concerns of our community is our roads and improving our roads. It was in our satisfaction survey. I've also recommended that we put $500,000 more into our, um, engineering budget for roads and, and attacking the backlog that we have and getting closer to that $12 million goal. And again, I think we need to maintain our, uh, forward sites on economic development and make sure that we're putting sales tax dollars to use for our community. So those are the, the, the highlights that I have. If anyone has recommendations or, or questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions, Paul? Anyone? Steve?
Just a comment about the difficulty in finding people to work in the public safety sector. I was in Minneapolis last week for a conference and one of the panels I attended was on policing. And, uh, one of the presenters I had a chance to meet and talk with was a sergeant for the Minnetonka, Minnesota Police Department. Minnetonka, I think is a pretty ritzy suburb and Minneapolis, I think most people consider a very desirable place to live. He said that they used to, just a few years ago, have up to 400 applicants for a single position. Now they're lucky if they get 20, 30, or maybe even 40. And the opinion of all the presenters and most of us in the room who were involved in this was that the quality of applicants has gone down significantly. So this is an issue that we face and communities in general face. And I think that's something as a society, uh, we need to start facing. There are far fewer people who want to devote themselves to the safety of our communities. And that's a real issue. I agree though, that there's no point in asking for more positions or funding them if we can't fill the ones we have. But I was really struck by that fact. I think Minnetonka and Minot are kind of polar opposites in terms of size of cities and perhaps reputations. And they're having a, a worse problem than we are even, which is really sad. But anyway, um, so I, you know, I, I think that's something we need to do everything we can to improve the quality and the number of applicants we have for what is a very challenging, but absolutely critical part of our, of our government and our society. So it's true what they say. It's hard to find good people.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I, I'd like to address the one position that Alderman Pittner has recommended removing from the property maintenance department. We currently maintain over 45 facilities, 380,000 square feet. That position isn't just going to maintain the parking garages. It's going to help maintain the new 42,000 square foot city hall that you're going to be taking on. It's going to be helping with the new fire station. We assist all the other departments with their mechanical needs on their air conditioning, heating, cooling, things like that. So, um, I would suggest if you do eliminate the position, then you contract with outside services to help with some of the, either maintaining the parking garages or the new city hall. And for a budget number, you can use about a hundred thousand dollars. That's what it would cost you to hire an outside service to come in.
I'm sorry, how much?
About a hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
So. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any other comments, questions? Comments from before? If not, we don't need an action on this, do we? Oh. My apologies.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd just like to address the, uh, the proposal to cut current positions and, um, I guess to me kind of mask giving me something with a task force officer. Derek, could you pull up the information? So looking at recruiting, I've, I've had several conversations, um, with council members and other people around the community and within the field of law enforcement. We currently recruit from North Dakota, South Dakota, Minnesota, Montana, and Wyoming, all the universities, uh, through handshake. Uh, we go to all the job fairs in Minot. We try to go to as many as we can in North Dakota. We go to Alexandria Technical College, which is one of the bigger places for us to recruit officers from. Uh, we do outreach, um, through a number of different programs to try to put our name out there and put ourselves out there. The academy attendance across state is down. Uh, there's no, no hiding that. I talked to the director, uh, of the Lake Region Academy. You can see the numbers there. They were running almost, well, more than twice as many students through their program. And, uh, they're just not getting those numbers. They canceled the academy in Minot because they can't get enough numbers to actually turn a profit. The problem is North Dakota competes for the same, same applicants. It's no different in finance. When I talked to the finance director today, they're competing and basically moving people around, uh, in competition, uh, for these spots. Grand Forks Police Department, uh, they're the third largest. Alderman Pittner, you said in your letter that we need to start to move forward and act like we're, uh, one of the fourth biggest cities. That's true. They have 92. They were just down 15 officers and they were able to make that up and they're only three officers down. Now you cut my positions, I don't have that opportunity to even get there. We have 83 sworn officers. You just heard a complaint from a citizen wanting more from us. We don't have enough to do more. The task force position is, I'm assigned 83 officers. I choose where to put them in the community. I decide where we need them the most. We have three up there that wasn't authorized by the council. That was a decision by the chief at the time. My decision, I actually asked for five officers. So now I'm going to get minus three. That just does not sit well with me, given the, the information in front of me. I've got 253 shifts I had to fill with officers. So 253 officers had to work an additional shift just to make minimum staffing this year so far. This is our schedule. Sick leave, light duty. I have four officers out on light duty are injured right now. Uh, I've got two officers in training and I have eight open positions. Uh, the, the numbers in the city manager's report, we have comm time, we have military leave. All of that is factored into the numbers. At the way bottom of that schedule, you can see the, the little numbers in orange and strewn across, those are all overtime slots. Uh, they're all filling a vacancy where we didn't meet minimum staffing. Our officers spend an average of 47 minutes on every call. If you take everything we do, 47 minutes is put into, uh, on an average by an officer. Property crimes are going down. Violent crimes are going up. 14 homicides in the last three years, well, two and a half years. The numbers are in front of you that you're asking me to do more with less, just like everything else. Overtime, um, I'm over budget already. I'm just past halfway through the year. Hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars I've spent this year. Uh, I, I, I don't, you know, it's great for the officers who want to work that, but they're getting burned out and that's not going to keep people in my, my department. They absolutely are, are taxed to the max. And they don't have much left in them. You have the two things in front of you based on a couple of different studies, mental health and physical health. Uh, the price you're paying by cutting officers and making them do more is their mental health and their physical health is on the line. And they're not going to do it. They're just not going to do it. You know, right now, I think our department's running good. I think they're working hard to make the ends meet, but they think there's an end in sight. But if you remove the possibility of me giving them an end, I don't have that to offer. They're, they're going to see three officers less coming to help them make ends meet. So I would just ask that you reconsider, uh, that proposal. Again, this isn't, this isn't about me. My job stays the same. But the proposal I put in front of you in the budget proposal in the first place was to help move positions from what I could fill with a civilian. None of those were entertained. Support to help the people that are sworn officers, uh, those were not entertained. And the five positions I requested to take a little bit more of the weight off and help our citizens with their more minor issues compared to homicides and burglaries and that kind of thing is off the table. So that's all I have, but I'd entertain any questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Charles.
Thank you. Well, I think you heard him loud and clear and I'll, I'll second his motion. The fact of the matter is that you can't fill them and there's 20-some in Fargo. This is a problem across the nation. It's not, obviously there's some pay issues probably, but generally it's just recruiting. The demonization of the police force, which is horrific around the nation and it's disgusting actually. But nobody's taking any, you don't have them now. So nobody's taking, you're not, if you could fill them, we'll do it right now. The fact of the matter is you can't. So there's no taking or no making extra work. If you could fill them, fill them. I mean, I know you can't. I mean, unfortunately, I wish we could, but, um, so there's no taking here of any kind. I think that's a misrepresentation of what we're actually trying to do here.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Strilee, respectfully, no, it's not. I'm authorized those positions and if they're taken out of the budget, I can no longer hire them. So if they're not in my budget, I can't hire them. And we have fought, just like the, the five I have in my budget, they weren't approved this year. So what makes me believe that I'm going to ever get those three back? Because if I never fill them, you're never going to give them to me, regardless of how close I get. And we've been fully staffed in the last couple of years, but we won't be able to get there. And that's just where we are today, not with what I need, which is the additional five positions that I'm asking for.
Well, I know you need it, but you, you, you've clearly can't fill them. I wish we could. Grand Forks can't fill theirs, Fargo can't fill theirs, Minnetonka can't fill theirs. So there's no taking of positions here. They're not full right now. So whatever we need to do to help you do that, I would gladly make that motion to move funding here or there or whatnot. If they're civilian positions, where, uh, uniform, uh, you know, on the street, so to speak, are right now, we should fund those instead because you're not going to fill, unfortunately aren't going to fill the positions. Even if we authorize 50 new positions, you probably won't fill any of the 50 because you already have 10 on the books right now that you can't fill. Uh, again, I wish you could. Uh, I'll fund any comp positions you can fill from here to eternity, but the fact of the matter is there's no taking here at all, period.
Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, I, this is, this is not an attack on the police department. It's not an attack on, on, on not wanting to be able to provide services to, to citizens. The fact of the matter is, is that we have positions that can't be filled or haven't been filled. And that's why my suggestion is to allocate a lot of the cost savings to the future of the police department. I want to make sure that the police department is set up for the future, but I have heartburn taxing citizens on positions that we know we've not been able to fill just to roll over into the general fund. Let's allocate those dollars. Let's be forward thinking and say, hey, we've got seven positions. Let's fill those, come to us with a budget amendment. I have no problem. I don't know anybody on this council that wouldn't raise their hand, um, to support the hiring of another officer if we were fully staffed. Um, I, I believe the PIO position within, um, within the, uh, the budget that, that is recommended for approval should help. It's going to be dedicated to public safety. You have officers, I think, that have dedicated a lot of time to public outreach in the past. Hopefully that can help alleviate some of those issues. Again, there's, there's no, I want to reiterate, Alderman Strilee, there's no taking of positions. If, if you, if you can, if, if the department can show to us that we're fully staffed and we need more, everyone up here will fully support that, chief. Everyone will. And, and if that's what you need from us to help you believe that, that that's it, I'll say it right now, I'll be the first one to, to approve a budget amendment for another officer if we get it fully staffed. But right now, my thought is to be forward thinking and to show citizens that, hey, when a multi-million dollar expenditure in rehabbing this building for the police department to ensure that they are successful, we can attract great candidates and they, they have, uh, a department that they can be proud of and, and want to come work versus a Fargo or a biz market if we're competing, then let's do it versus having an outdated building that you guys have outgrown and, and frankly, probably should have been addressed years ago. So that's where my mindset is with that. That's where my recommendation is coming from. I, I, I have full faith in our police department can, can, can get there eventually. And if, if some of those cost savings need to go towards better recruitment or, or, or more recruitment, then, then so be it. But right now, we're, we're taxing citizens for positions that aren't being filled, can't be filled. Again, I wish they could be, but if we need to be more creative or, or, or do a different job, a better job, or think outside of the box when it comes to bringing officers on board, I'm all for that. Let's work smarter, not harder. Um, that, that, that's my mindset. And again, I, I will fully support officers in the, in, in the future if we can fill these positions that we have.
Thank you, Paul.
Mayor Ross, could I just ask one question? So is there cuts in this budget as proposed? Alderman Pittner? Are we saving money by what we're doing today?
Right now, the cost savings are being reallocated within this budget to go towards roads and to go towards the future of the police department. I have not reduced the burden on taxpayers, but I have put a lot of mindfulness and thoughtfulness that when we're faced with a $10 million, and this is not, do not quote me on this, when it's going to cost $10 million to redo this building, hey, we have some money in the coffers and we don't have to go to taxpayers for the full expense. We've started to allocate and save money for that expenditure that we know is coming. We're going to be proactive versus reactive for the expenses that are coming our way.
Mayor?
Ross.
Thank you. Uh, could you provide us a list of the, the sworn officers that are doing civilian jobs today that could flip to, to the street, so to speak, again? So we know what that, uh, how many it is? I know, I know it was in your budget presentation. Was it two, three, four? I forget.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Strilee, I had, um, uh, evidence technician and the community outreach specialist. And as proposed, the community outreach specialist as working under the city is not going to take that burden off and that officer stays in place.
Well, I don't know. I mean, that can't be completely because what's the point of the position then? The PIO position, if it's not going to reduce any burden? And then the evidence one, is that the halftime that you wanted to go to full time?
No, that's, that's a full-time position. And the reason it doesn't really, re-solve the problem with the other position is I can't assign all the duties that I originally had planned because they're also responsible for the fire department.
Well, we, well, we don't know that yet because it hasn't been implemented. So we don't know if it would actually.
If, if approved.
It probably would work, but we, we haven't even given it a try. And you're, you're kind of saying, no, it's not going to work. But we don't know that yet.
Steve, did you have anything?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of your answer.
Oh, and I just said, if it's approved, it, it won't solve the problem that I have.
Anything else?
As proposed right now.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, as long as I have the floor. During the time I spent in Minneapolis, I also went to a half-day workshop, which I paid for, on latest developments in the science of police use of force. And one of the main points that came out of that was that when you're, if you're concerned about inappropriate behavior by police officers, you know, barking up the tree of prejudice and implicit bias is really the wrong way to go. The latest research seems to suggest that cognitive abilities play a huge role in how officers react in emergency situations, so your comments about impaired judgment and decreased adaptability are absolutely on target, what the latest research is showing, that you want to choose, you want to select for officers who can make good judgments, who could adapt to situations, and trying to do all sorts of sensitivity training and whatever, probably is a waste of your time, or worse than that, probably is a misdirection of your time. So I think workload issues are really probably more important than you realize in terms of, you know, my profession, what we're coming up with, and I'll, I'll sit down with you at some point, give you a free overview of what I learned, but it was really amazing. I also reinforced very much what we learned in Citizen Police Academy in terms of how quickly people need to respond, and if you want to protect citizens against, and officers too, in departments and cities against impulsive and rash behavior, you want to choose, you want to look for those kinds of mental factors, not some of the other things that people are coming up with. So you're, you, you really are on target when you talk about the importance of these things, particularly cognitive load and flexibility and judgment.
Thank you, Mayor Ross, Alderman Pajagula. That's why we limit our shifts to sixteen hours, because I find when you start to approach that fourteen to fifteen hours, that's when most of the bad decisions are made in shootings and use of force.
Right.
So we limit that, but it's getting hard to do, and... I, I think the only thing I would say, Mayor Ross, maybe the city manager or, or Dave Lakefield could speak to, whether you remove the positions or not, that money's going in the general fund either way. At least I have the positions authorized. It's just masking that, how it's getting there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I, I've been up here a long time, and I've gone through a lot of budgets, and we are elected to tax appropriately. I mean, that's, that's why people put us in these seats, to cover the costs of what our citizens expect and deserve. And it's, it's a tight balancing act, it definitely is. But I know a few years ago, we, we erred in our decision by putting the, the burden on our staff. We, we saved some taxpayer dollars on the back of our staff members, and those staff members left, and they left in droves, because they looked to us for support, they looked to us to be there for them, to provide for them as well. They are our citizens as well. And in the end, it cost us so much more money, because we had to retrain a lot of our employees, re-train new employees, new hires, when we were able to even fill the positions. So this is tough. The positions aren't being filled, so I, I understand why we don't want to tax, but yet we're sending a message, particularly to our Police Department, that we don't have their back, that we aren't putting enough faith in the fact that they could find those employees, and those employees are needed. You know, the slide that we're looking at is, is very telltale. When those individuals are working that many overtime shifts, their mental health and their physical health are impacted, and when those are impacted, they leave. So I, I don't have an easy answer for us, because we're, again, we're trying to balance it, but I certainly want to, you know, acknowledge to our, our employees that we want to take care of them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be clear, I think what Alderman Olson is referring to is when, I think, some cost of living raises and, and wages and, and for employees was denied. We're not denying any owner in the Police Department a raise, we're not denying anybody a cost of living increase, we're not doing any of that. We're just being mindful, these positions are not being filled. Yes, it may go to the general fund, but if we are earmarking this fund to go towards future expenditures, I believe that is the best interest. Roughly, just rough numbers here, from what the police officer position slash drug task force position was allocated was about seventy-six thousand dollars times three. The positions that we're removing is about two-hundred-twenty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. We can absolutely not tax that and give it back to citizens. I mean, maybe we should do that. But if, what we're doing at this, at the DIAS is, we're saying, we have a future expenditure we know is coming, let's start to save for that, to reduce the costs to taxpayers later. That's my mindset. Again, I, we can, we can adjust it and give it, put it back into taxpayers' pockets as well. If that gives less heartburn to everyone involved, then, then so be it. But my mindset was to still put this towards the Police Department's future. That was my justification for it, but...
Yes? Mr. Mayor, City Council members, my name's Kent Cozen, I'm the president of the local FOP lodge here in Minot, representing a very large chunk of the Minot Police Officers who are currently employed here in Minot. I'm also that property and evidence technician, as me. So my job could absolutely be done by civilian, I acknowledge that. I have a knowledge base, being a police officer, that helps me with that job. I can pass that knowledge base on. Just to give you some perspective as well, I've sat on the council before. I was, I worked for the state as a trooper, so I've got some experience and knowledge and benefits and employee wellness. I've been a police officer for fifteen years. I went from being a trooper to coming to Minot, in large part for the environment and the camaraderie of the employees that I've seen that work for this organization. I've been here for four years, and in that four years, I've seen, it's, it's a disappointing level of turnover. I don't blame the city at all for that completely. It's just, people generally don't want to do this job. It's very difficult. It's hard to come to work. There's been a lack of respect amongst those who do this job, who put the uniform on. The unfortunate reality is, the media picks up on all the bad ones and not on the good ones. It's actually very disappointing to watch the news and see how many cops do bad things, and instead of seeing the ones that do the good things. The unfortunate reality is, a byproduct of that is our staffing issue. I would love nothing more than to put my uniform on and go and sit in front of Edison. I would love nothing more to do that, but I got two of these, right? And if the city council takes a set of these, or, or three, or however many it is, that precludes me from being able to go out and do those things. The Police Department has a very diverse mission. There's a lot of things that we do, we are called upon to do a lot of things. At two o'clock in the morning, when a citizen has an issue, who do they call? They call 911. The pipes burst in the street out front, they call us. So in a roundabout way, we're that clearinghouse in those hours. But once again, we have two of these. So if I'm an officer, and there's only four or five of us working at night, and one of us has to go to check on this pipe, to make sure that it is in fact broken, to save public works of money, say, actually, it's not broken, something else is going on, you know, we're, we're saving the city money by doing that for them. We can go out and be like, nah, there's not a water main break there, or, or whatever. So when you talk about cost savings and our ability to help the city in, in diverse ways, it's, that, that, there's no metric for that. It's so difficult to do that. One of my stumps at the Police Department is officer wellness. Part of being a good cop and, and caring for your community, and caring for the people living in that picture, is being able to know that things are going well at work. The less stress I have, the better I can do for those folks, right? And when we're short-staffed already, there's a stress there. I want to do what's best for this community. I truly do. So do my coworkers, we all do. We want to do what's absolutely best, and we do that a lot of times with the understanding that, you know what, we're short-staffed right now, we're going to work overtime, I'm going to put in my time, I'm going to do my extra six hours on my shift, because it's my turn, right? Then in overtime, to make that happen, with the guise that, one day, my leader is going to be able to backfill those positions, and I won't have to do that anymore. But if you defund those positions, if you stop those positions, the light at the end of that tunnel goes away for me. And now I'm anxious, and I'm under more stress, because now I have to worry about that. I don't, shouldn't have to. It's not directly my responsibility as an officer that, you know, that's the chief's job, that's the supervision's job, to worry about finding a way to make that happen. That's recruitment, that's his, that's his job, not mine. But it still weighs on me, and it weighs on every single cop that works for the city of Minot, I guarantee you. It weighs on all of us. So if you take those spots away, you begin to dim that light at the end of that tunnel a lot. Now, I could sit here all day and do this all day, and I don't want to do that to you guys, but I, our lodge has drafted a letter to the council regarding the defunding of those spots, and I would, I've got copies for everyone, including the city manager and the clerk for the record. My second vice president here, Aaron Moss, he'll hand those out, and I'd stand for any questions that you guys have from somebody who's directly affected by these decisions.
Any questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, what are your recommendations to help us fill even fifty percent of them? I mean, there's, is it, you know, recruitment bonuses, higher wages, better benefits? I mean, what can we do to differentiate them? I mean, obviously, it's a problem in literally every single department in the nation, but what can we do to alleviate that by actually filling the positions versus leaving them, you know, vacant?
Sorry, was that question directed at me?
Yeah.
If you, if you were to ask me, from a labor organization standpoint, how to solve the problem of being able to recruit new officers, it would be a sign-on bonus. If you want to directly make an impact on that right now, it would be, it'd be money.
Thank you.
So then if, let's just say, four positions, you know, roughly three-hundred-and-ten-thousand. So if we take, remove four positions, three in the current budget, one in the other one, that'd be about three-hundred-and-ten-thousand. What if we plowed two-hundred-thousand of that back into recruitment, say, five-thousand-dollar recruitment bonuses? Would you fill the other seven?
I'm not advocating for cutting any positions. I would argue that you need to add recruitment and bonuses on top of the funding, the positions that we currently have funded. That's what I would recommend. Any other questions?
Steve?
Yeah, just a, a question for the administration. I'd like to get some sense, I mean, this has been proposed, and it's something that I think other people, including me, have thought about. I'd like to get some opinion as to how legal that is, particularly in terms of civil service rules, and also the issue of equitable treatment of all employees. So at some point, not tonight, but if we could get a, a feedback from the, both the police chief and the city manager and our HR people as to what this, how they would look at this proposal. Again, I also want to offer my perspective for someone, from someone who's worked with law enforcement officers for forty-five years, and paid, tried to pay attention to their mental health and improve their selection and functioning. What you're saying, I think, Kenton, is very much on target. In larger cities, they talk about, you know, replacing police officers with social workers, and those of us who were at that one symposium in Minneapolis just laughed at the stupidity of that. If you've actually gone out at two o'clock in the middle of the night and dealt with someone who's suicidal, that can easily become a homicidal situation. So the idea of replacing, you know, uniformed sworn trained police officers with other groups, I mean, there are major limits to that. One of the things in terms of recruitment that came up at this one symposium was the value, and this is a long-term issue, but of the value of school resource officers. In fact, the officer from Minnetoka, who was a presenter, said that was what got him into policing. So I think in the long run, if we pay attention to these kinds of things, there will be some dividends, but actually, there appears to be some data that school resource officers and early positive encounters with police officers, like the Police Athletic League in big cities and things like that, and some of the stuff we do, and you do, Aaron, will, will have an effect. But I think if, if we can look carefully at bonuses, that's something we need to do. But it is, it is a major problem, and, you know, the, the other side of it, against being a psychologist, is very easy to become hopeless. And clearly, although that is an issue nationally, obviously, there are some departments that do better than others and some that do worse, and I'd like to have a little bit better sense of what it is that characterizes those departments that have a little bit less of a problem. Everybody has a problem, but some have been a little bit more success, successful. If you're a professional organization, your union thinks bonuses are worth trying, recruitment bonuses, I think we should give that a very, very serious look.
My second vice president here has some kind of notes about recruitment.
Mayor Ross, members of the council, my name is Aaron Moss. I'm currently the second vice president of the North Dakota Fraternal Order Police Lodge Seven here in Minot, and the immediate past president, I stepped back when Kenton wanted to kind of take the reins, and after three years, I was quite willing to do that, but I'm not willing to, to not speak up when I, when I feel it's necessary. To Alderman Strilee's comment, what, what could we do right now, this moment? I, you know, in terms of throwing money at the problem, I don't think that's, I think that kind of tends to simplify, simplify the, uh, the solution, so to speak. Alderman Strilee, I would say, but if there was, if there was something that would be helpful in terms of budgeting, when it comes, comes from, from the DIAS, we are the, still, and I've said this for years, the only government employees in the region that don't pay, aren't paid full family medical. I think in terms of a benefit, that could be, that could be addressed. I know that's, that's come up before, I know that's, I know that's, there's been talk back and forth, but it kind of, kind of makes me cringe a little bit when I hear that, oh, we have comparable pay rates to, to other agencies doing the same work, when, when we don't, when they don't have to pay medical. And that goes back to Alderman Olson's point, where there was a decision made, and when it came to, what Alderman Pittner rightly pointed out was the, the, what resulted in a pay cut by the denial of the pay raise, simply because, you know, you know, we can, we can dance around semantically and call it a pay raise delay, or, you know, or, in reality, it was a pay cut simply because our, our health insurance, our, our, our portion of the health insurance premiums that we had to pay went up without an, without an increase in, in pay to help cover that. So we did go backwards in that sense. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, that's, that's, that's water under the bridge now. But ultimately, when, you know, if, if you're just going to show an interest in funding only, or what, what you can do only by funding right now, that, that would be my answer. But ultimately, it goes back to Alderman Olson's point, was that there's, there's more to this job than the, the dollars and cents on a tally sheet. I've been in law enforcement now in one shape or another almost thirty years, eighteen of which have been with this department, and a good chunk of that time has been with, in community outreach. To, to suggest that my position complete, could, could be completely civilianized, whether it's me doing it or not, is irrelevant, but to suggest that it could be completely civilianized based upon what it is that this position is required to do in the community, would immediately lose credibility. The, the department would lose credibility, because when I'm asked to come out to do, to, uh, presentations, for example, I don't care if it's for bicycle safety at, at an elementary school, or I don't care if it's anti-robbery for our financial institutions, or if it's, or if it's prevention of sexual assault and, and domestic violence, that badge and that law enforcement experience responding in real world to do what the, what those, what, what officers have to respond to, and that cannot be duplicated by a civilian. Now, that's not to say I disagree with a, a public information and community outreach civilian position being, being added to that. That would take off some of the burden of, for, you know, example, uh, doing immediate, immediate interaction with the press, for example, or, which I have no problem doing, you know, but the, the point being that this is not, this, this job is more than numbers on a tally sheet, it's more than a, a series of tasks on a checklist, so...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, one more, one more point. So what if of the, I'll use that same example, remove four positions, three-hundred-and-nine-thousand. What if we were to let the Police Department keep fifty percent of that money, one-hundred-and-fifty grand-ish, and then use that for bonus and retention for every officer, sworn officer, that's eighty-three positions, that's eighteen-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars a year, just as a, here you go, retention, recruit?
Mayor Ross and Alderman Strilee, I guess, I, I'm not objectionable to, to, you know, as, as an individual, being paid more. I, I guess, uh, it's not my, it's not my intention to come up here to, to ask you to feather my nest, or feather, feather a department's nest.
I mean, will it help?
I, I imagine anytime you, you offer somebody money, it's helpful. I don't know empirically... I don't know empirically what that's going to do in, in the long run. I believe that's a, a conversation that's more suited for the, for the chief of police, but I would not personally be objectionable to being offered money. You've got me. It's, but it's not me you have to worry about. I've been with this department 18 years. I'm, I'm going to stay until retirement, you know, barring any unforeseen circumstance that would prevent me from doing this job. You know, I, I'm, I'm vested and invested. So it's, 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 at the beginning, I.
I like that. I've never heard that before. I'm going to use that. Well, I mean, there's things that could be done in the healthcare to, with the high deductible plan, example, to dramatically reduce the premium that you pay to almost zero and still save the city money. So I think there's some things that could be looked at on that as well.
So, and, and I didn't want to take away from President Carlson's time here, but I just wanted to kind of maybe answer that question more and, and thank Alderwoman Olson for, for, she hit the nail on the head. Mr. Mayor, it's, it's absolutely, there's, we don't get in this job for, to get rich. If we're doing that, we probably belong in prison. So my, my point being that we, when, when there's these types of suggestions made because the front end on the tally sheet, yeah, it, it does create a, a bad taste and a perception that our backs aren't, aren't, aren't being looked after. So, and on that, I'll, I'll close my comments.
Anything else, Paul?
Just want to maybe mention this to, to Harold. Harold, your predecessor, prior to his departure, had compiled a recruitment and retention work group. It consisted of former Chief Olson, Chief Kelly, Chief Constable was, was a part of this, as well as myself, HR. Maybe it might be something worth, worth looking into to hear from the chiefs and, and in the public safety sector to see what can be done to help, help with recruitment and retention within those departments. I think our work was cut short a little bit, so, and some of those findings were never presented. So if that could be maybe visited with, with HR, I think it might be, might have some valuable information there.
Thank you, Paul. Do we have to take action on them? No action? Okay.
This is the time I want to.
What's that?
Can I interject right now?
Go ahead.
So this is something I've been thinking about for a couple of years since I have been elected, and there wasn't really a good place to, you know, put this. And so I think I'll just talk about it now. As one thing, I mean, I think we've seen apparent, as we've been discussing, is that, I mean, the budget is a very hefty process, and it's not going to be popular, but I would like for us to have three special meetings between now and maybe the second week of September to have budget work sessions. I think you see how our regular meetings get bogged down, and I think that's unfair to the budgets and to the departments and our staff, and, and then to the regular agenda items. So I would like to see us, you know, the city clerk find time for what works for, you know, a majority of, of council to have, and divide it up like the city manager did his discussions last week into one being on public safety, that's, you know, a session, a general government session, and a public works and streets session. And we just sit down and we hammer, we, you know, take these and we roll our sleeves up and focus on those particular budgets, on those particular times. It's going to be time-consuming. It is, it's not going to be fun for anybody, but this is too important to the staff and the citizens of Minot, I think, to try and do this in the midst of our regular meetings. So I don't know, Ms. Handishak, do I have to do a motion for that, or just direct the city clerk to do that?
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, a special meeting can be called by the city manager, the mayor, or any two aldermen.
Okay. Do I have another colleague who would?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, Alderwoman Evans, I think that's a fantastic idea. It's exactly what happens at the legislative process. There's working, you hear the budgets, there's working groups, you know, dozens a day is a working group. There's no working group here. It's just, here's the budget, go look at it. Maybe we'll talk about a little bit, I think, more, more involvement with department heads is important in, in, in flipping through these budgets in more detail. So I, I think it's a fantastic idea, and I'd absolutely second that.
And to that end, like, things like the item we have next, the 9.2, which is the electrical inspectors, I mean, that's a 2023 budget issue. And so, like, it's things like that, right, that I would want discussed at the special meeting? Not that I don't, you know, unless there's some imperative reason, but, you know, just adding it in at 7:20 is, I don't think, fair to the issue and the discussion. So if we would do that, then I'm going to make a motion to hold 7:2 until our special, or 9:2, right? Is that the?
9:2.
That's the electrical inspectors?
9:2 is the electric, electric inspector, and 9:3 is.
Just to put that in the, you know, so we could have that, that would be in the public works and streets, I guess, night? Oh, Mr. Billingsley, did you have?
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, Alderwoman Evans, to let you know, over my left shoulder, we have representatives from the state electrical board here. Some came from Bismarck for this meeting, so they were hoping to be able to address the council this evening.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, I'd prefer that we address this issue and maybe the current 2022 budget issue for the department as well, or for the.
Sounds good. And then if there's any cleanup to do, we can do it in the special meetings or something. Sounds good. Thanks for that, Brian.
There is a motion to have three special meetings.
I believe the motion is to direct the city clerk to schedule three special meetings.
Yeah.
Yep, correct.
We have a motion and a second.
Unless, does anybody, you know, are those three areas broad enough, narrow enough? Do we need to have less, more? Like, this was just, I just had looked at what Harold did with citizens last week and thought that was a good sort of, you know, those three big areas, but.
Mark?
I, I think, you know, sort of focusing on the three general areas is fine, as long as the overall agenda is the budget, so that if we sort of move from one thing to another, we're not completely restricted in a given meeting. So if the meetings are to discuss the budget, but, you know, sort of a, a focus on one area or the other is fine, but, you know, sometimes.
Yep.
Doing something in one area leads.
Yep.
Leads to discussion of another one. I think we should have that flexibility.
So I think we just make the agenda, like, broad, right? But saying, you know, like, this will be a focus on public safety, however, discussion can happen on any proposed area of the 2023 budget would be enough for our legal requirements? Ms. Handishak?
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, for a special meeting, the council can only discuss what's specifically on the agenda. So, yep, the clerk and city manager, I would assume, would be able to work out some language, limiting it to the 2023 budget, but allowing for some leverage here.
But that will have, like, a special topic of public safety for, you know what I mean? So we know what, you know, so, you know, Dan doesn't have to come to the public safety one, if he doesn't, you know what I mean? I would have suggested you would, Dan.
Other comments?
Because you never know, it could get right into public works right away.
Comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Evans? Yes. Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Prodigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes. Let's move on. So we're moving on to 9.2?
Yep.
The Minot Electrical Inspection Program. Staff recommends the city council retain the electrical inspection program for a fiscal year 2023 budget year. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Steve. Discussion.
Mayor Ross, if I may, for a couple of minutes, give a quick presentation. First of all, good evening, everyone. Wanted to let you know that the city of Minot has conducted electrical inspections on all homes and businesses for the past 60 years. We currently have two full-time electrical inspector positions. They're both have been vacant since the 26th of June. We did contact the North Dakota State Electrical Board, and they agreed to provide inspections in the city until we decided on a path forward with, with the program. We're thankful to James Schmidt, the executive director of the NDCB, for covering our inspections for the past seven weeks. James is over my left shoulder, along with a couple of other people from the electrical During the last seven weeks, we've used this experience as, as a trial run to see whether or not it would make sense or not to have the electrical board provide this service for us full-time. During this time, we experienced two incidents where miscommunication or training on city procedures delayed an inspection. However, I want to let you know that when we brought these issues to the attention of the electrical board, they resolved them immediately the following day. Keeping the electrical inspector program in-house would cost the city approximately $200,000 in FY 2023. This would include salaries, benefits, and operating costs, and those operating costs are mostly gasoline and auto boat of maintenance. The city collects approximately $70,000 a year annually from the, from the electrical board and state electrical permit certification fees, and approximately $21,000 a year annually through permits that are issued here by the city. So if the city were to choose to cut the program and hand it over to the electrical board, it would save the, the city approximately $109,000 per year. Since I started working for the city in 2019, I've conducted annual customer satisfaction survey, surveys for our customers that use the inspections department. I always give a link of the survey to the Minot Association of Builders, and they send that link out to all their members through emails or through their, their newsletters. Every year, the last three years that I've conducted this survey, we've had a 100% response to question number 11 on the survey. That question is, are your inspections performed promptly as scheduled? And every single year, the response to that question is 100% yes. You know, we offer same-day or following-day inspections to all of our customers, and they're pleased with the level of service they're receiving. In my opinion, I don't think we should tamper with something that isn't broken. And for that reason, building official Luke Tillma, I recommend we, we continue with the program. It says nothing to do with the state electrical board. I think they have great inspectors, and they do a good job. But I think what, I'd like Luke to speak for a few minutes to talk about how this is going to impact his operation, his day-to-day operation. And Mayor Ross, to let you know, I think we may also have some electrical contractors in the audience that would like to address the council tonight as well. So with that, I thank you for your time, and, and Luke will be available to talk about how it will impact his day-to-day operations.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ross, council. I'm Luke Tillma. I'm the building official for the city of Minot. As you've heard from Mr. Billingsley, the city's staff is recommending city council continue to fund the electrical inspection program. My sole basis is, on that recommendation is because that's what I know. I know what I do. I know what it takes to get the electrical inspectors out there, and I know what it takes for the communication between all the other different inspectors, you know, to, to create that puzzle of a building, you know, with each piece, anyway. And we could probably stand here all night together with the state electrical board and speculate about issues that may or may not arise, but I don't believe that to be constructive. It's my opinion that funding and staffing the two electrical inspector positions that are currently in the budget is directly in line with city council's magic city aspirations. But most obviously, for the city of Minot to be safe and welcoming by continuing to maintain current levels of public safety, even if more resources were required. Also striving to be excellent and connected by ensuring an efficient, flexible, and highly high-quality of service the city of Minot inspection department offers in all building I think history has proven that local control for public safety is the most effective and efficient way to ensure that for your constituency. It makes the most sense, the same way the city of Minot does our own crime prevention and fire prevention. The city of Minot has hired me to oversee the city of Minot division that enforces these building codes, and I take my job very serious. I'm very passionate about building safety. And it's my opinion that the decision to remove electrical inspectors from the city of Minot budget would be several steps backwards from the progress in efficiencies and effectiveness that the inspection department has made in the last several year, several years. We've worked very hard to ensure the quality, timeliness, and efficiency of these inspections that the citizens of this city receive and have grown accustomed to. As Brian again previously mentioned, the citizens' overall customer satisfaction with the inspection staff has been excellent and consistent over the last three years. Having the flexibility and ability to direct staff is, is one of the major reasons why we can score that high. Communication between electrical inspectors and other city of Minot inspection staff is crucial. There are many instances when only one part of the job or inspections puzzle, we'll say, is made aware of an ongoing job. For example, we'll just use electricians for an example here, just because that's what we're talking about. When an electrician pulls a certificate and calls for a rough-in or in-wall inspection, that's a good indication that a building permit would probably also be required. So without that constant communication, there'll be no way for the city of Minot to ensure that the framing for that wall, that the electric, electrical wiring is in, was installed to the adopted building code. This has already happened within the last seven weeks, and will continue to happen as long as the electrical inspector in the city of Minot is not employed by the city of Minot. Critical piece of the efficiency has been, has been implemented into the inspection department policies required constant communication between all of the inspectors. Typically, in this situation, the electrical inspector would have inquired with the building inspector or myself if there was a building permit for that project. So I've also heard possibly staffing only one electrical inspector position. I would be opposed to that as well. Workload currently is sufficient for two inspectors and for the foreseeable future as well. With projects like the Trax development Broadway Circle or the Project B, the new high school and other school additions and remodels, the demand for inspections is going to remain. We've learned a lot from the Trinity Hospital project that we need to consider for the future, moving forward. There have been several instances where electrical contractors were scheduled, would schedule an, an inspection for between 80 to 200 rooms at a time. As you can imagine, these inspections take several days for one inspector to complete typically, while also talking on the phone, taking phone calls with questions and scheduling other inspections for other projects. In order to not cause delays for other projects, it's critical for the city of Minot to employ two electrical inspectors. Even when the electrical board was recently asked to conduct inspections for 177 rooms of just overhead lighting at the hospital, they still had to use two inspectors. With the increasing rate of development and the desire of council to continue to develop safely, the need for two electrical inspectors remains. And the North Dakota State Electrical Board would more than likely be willing to and also capable of helping with electrical inspector inspections when the one electrical inspector that we had on staff took scheduled time off. However, time off isn't always scheduled, and I don't think that's fair to the electrical board to, to put them in that position when we have unscheduled time off. Just a little bit for the numbers. Electrical certificates or permits are, are not a good measuring tool for, to use for gauging workload. The number of inspections is an extremely accurate window into the workload of the electrical inspections. So just for a little food for thought, Trinity Hospital to date, we already have 314 electrical inspections. That's one, one permit. That's one permit. That's 314 just electrical inspections. Some City of Minot projects, the pump station on Third Avenue, we had 26 electrical inspections on one certificate. Shields, we had 35. The Nas Water Treatment Plant Project, 35. Blue on Broadway was 31. Cerus Heights, we have 31. That's an ongoing project. That's really all I have, but I'll stand for questions.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So right now, and since August or June, you've had no city inspectors. And obviously, the things are working fine, or we'd have problems. You can't hire the positions. I think one of them was fired before, so obviously, that person wasn't doing a good job.
Nobody was fired.
In 2016, there was $189,000 worth of revenue. And in 2021, there was $57,000. So obviously, it's dramatically down, and we know why. The oil boom was crazy, and it's come back down. As far as that goes, the state inspectors oversee about 9,500 permits, 700 per inspector. So we're at 291 active right now? Is that correct?
Yes.
Ish? Forty-eight jobs roughly. Zero city inspectors doing that right now. So what's, is the world coming to the end? I mean, is there huge problems out there? I mean, the electrical contractors I've talked to said, no, it works just fine.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Striley, there isn't major issues at all. You asked me for a recommendation. This is my recommendation because this is what I know. This is how, I know how it works if I can do it, and that's why I recommended that.
But we have none right now, correct?
No major issues. We have no electrical inspectors.
But we have no city inspectors right now.
Apparently. That's right.
And City of Williston, Dickinson, West Fargo, Jamestown, Horace, like, you know, arguably faster-growing, more permits than we have. Well, for sure, West Fargo, they use the state. So it's working good with the state. The state's willing to do it. The budget number, if you look at the last three years and annualize it, 2020 was 70,000. If Derek wants to bring this up, that'd be great. I put this together on the screen. In 2020, there were 70,000 in revenue. Fifty-seven in '21, and half of 22 is 26,000. So, you know, add those three up, annualize 2020, divide by three, that's 60,000 roughly a year in revenue. City inspector minus 200,000. We can still keep that permit fee. We can raise that permit fee if we want, so you can still include that revenue. So now you had $160,000 worth of savings to the City of Minot. And the position, as far as I know, the State Electrical Board would hire another one in Minot. So now we'd have plenty of capacity. People that are, obviously, they're able to retain their employees more because they're paying them more. I mean, that's part of the problem, and the state benefits are better. So, you know, there's numerous angles you could hit here as far as that goes if you wanted to try to retain these employees. But the fact of the matter is, we can't retain them. We can't hire them. And it's working just fine with the state, and it's a budget savings to the taxpayer. So I guess I don't see what the problem is, if it's a control issue, if it's, I don't know what it is. But to me, this just seems like a layup to do. State law, you know, has jurisdiction, the State Electoral Board has jurisdiction over the entire state, whether we like that or not, the state law. And everything has to go through them anyway. So to me, this just makes perfect sense, and I would actually like to see, in the 2022 budget, an amendment prepared for that and voted on to remove the budget item. You can see there's $95,924 left that's unallocated from those two positions. I'd like to see that removed from the 2022 budget and put forward to the wayfinder, wayfinding as the initial tranche of money to jumpstart that program immediately.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Striley, one thing you may want to be aware of, when you're looking at these numbers, one big number is missing from all three of these years, which is the Trinity Hospital electrical cert fees. You could take that whole fee and spread it over these three years, and your numbers would be completely different. The way the Electrical Board collects fees is at the end of the project, when the final inspection is being, has been completed and approved. Just for your information.
But if you have the 21 with your own memo, the savings, which is light. I mean, you're at over 130,000 a year with the same type of service, because obviously, we don't have city inspectors now, and it's working just fine.
The reason it's working just fine is because of my flexibility and the way that, the way that I have things set up. Should we decide to go down this road and let the State Electrical Board take it, my involvement will be no more with it. We won't be scheduling inspections. We won't be doing anything except issuing a city permit.
Well, are they willing partners now? Is the State Electrical Board working with you now?
Absolutely.
So what would, what would give you any, why would they stop working with you? I guess I don't get that. They're not going to just immediately say, oh, we don't care what you think. I mean, they have to abide by the city code too.
But they could.
Well, I guess I would like to hear from the state inspector to, just as a, not necessarily a follow-up, but I mean, I just don't get why we're resistant to this. It works. It's working. It's a budget savings. And they're willing partners. They've stepped in and saved us, by the way. I mean, can you imagine if they weren't here? You'd have no jobs completed.
Okay.
Thank you, Luke.
Yep.
Mr. Schmidt? Yep?
I'd like to hear from the electrical contractors, I guess, that think this is a bad idea.
Are there any electrical contractors who would like to address the council?
I thought Mr. Billingsley said there was some here. My mistake.
Good evening. My name is James Schmidt. I'm the Executive Director. Yeah, Mr. Tillman had mentioned the 171 inspections we did have. I was talking to John here from our office. He's up here, the one helping out Minot right now. And we had another guy come because we thought it was going to be a big day. It took two hours, so it wasn't a big deal. The numbers that Alderman Striley there was referring to, as far as your revenues received from the city, or from the state to the city, were accurate. I had our office gal get them from QuickBooks this morning, went back 10 years. And yeah, you had some really big years back in '13 and '14, but it has clearly dropped off. And honestly, it doesn't matter to our office what you guys do. I mean, obviously, you have to make up your own mind. You have to appease your residents here in town. I get that. But there is, you know, if you're trying to cut budget and you want some help from us, that's, that's great. You know, we're here to do that. We do have authority for jurisdiction over the state, which we aren't trying to lord that over anybody. But, you know, we're working with you now. We've been up here to help during the flood, and we've had a lot of staff up here and training your inspectors that were here. And we'd be helped, you know, if you fired somebody, we'd be glad to train them again. But we do have to, I would like, I would like you to make a decision, one way or the other, what you're going to do. Because I do have an individual that we've interviewed, and he's ready to come to work. And I'm not trying to hold this over you. I'm just saying that this guy is, is ready to come to work, but he's not going to wait around forever. And I think our original agreement was through August was we were going to be here helping. Now, I don't know if you have any applicants or not now. I don't know that. But if you don't, and you're going to end this, you know, we have things we want to move on with too, so. Not trying to pressure you. I'm just making an honest statement. We got business to conduct of our own too, so. But like I say, we, yeah, we're doing West Fargo. They're busier than heck. Horace, all those cities around Fargo, our inspector there, Josh, he does a very good job of communicating with the cities. I don't quite understand what Luke meant about he'd be cut out of the picture. Absolutely not. He would not be. We would need to know when the certificate of occupancies are in place, when people are closing on a home loan. They need, they need that final inspection before their loans will close. We do that all the time. So, yeah. So, yeah, there was four cities that do their own, Fargo, Grand Forks, Bismarck, and Minot, until you lost your inspectors here. But, but yeah, so if you guys could make a decision, you know, on this, so that we can move on too. And like I said, our agreement was through August, which, you know, I guess that's up to Labor Day. But, so does anybody have any questions for me? I don't know. This is what the legislature charged us to do, so it's.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, if we can work something out, are you willing to extend that agreement? Because there's no way we're going to hire somebody in 15 days, train them up, and throw them on the job. Like, it's not possible, right?
Thinking you're going to wait till the end of the year, or?
No, but I mean.
Be a timeline here.
I mean, I would ask that, and if it gets voted down, fine, but I'd ask that a budget amendment be drafted for the removal of the two positions in the 2022 budget. That clears up '23 immediately. And then that money be, that savings of $95,000 be put in the wayfinding program to jumpstart that.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I just, you know, can't drag on forever, is what I'm getting at, so. Yeah, I don't know. I guess, you know, we're not going to cut Minot out of the, out of the picture. The Inspection Department will have to be involved. They'll have to be for all those reasons, you know, with the rough-ins and all that that we do, so. I don't know.
Any other?
Yes. Thank you. I had a question. You noted that the four largest cities in the state do their own inspections. Could you give us a sense of why that is, or why they say it is at least?
Well, I suppose it's the same reason Minot wanted to have theirs, you know, for the, the service, the, the local control. I, you know, that, there's that feeling, I'm sure that our office is Big Brother, and nobody really likes Big Brother watching over them, right? Fargo, they have three inspectors. They're busy enough. So we cut checks every, every month then to the cities. And Fargo's is usually, I was just trying to think now, I think it's usually around 70, 80, 90,000 a month. You know, they're busy. There's a lot of, there's a lot of activity in Fargo. Grand Forks, I noted, was down. I talked to their city manager about that a few weeks ago. And yeah, the, the construction is down, so the fees are down. They're all, you know, based, fee-based. Bismarck, they're kind of holding their own. You know, they're, I think they have two inspectors there. So, yeah. But, you know, the, so, and I'm just going to say this, like it or not, with 291 active certs for Minot, in our opinion, that would be like a halftime position. But that's just the way we operate, so.
You're saying you think we could get by with half of an inspector?
Well, if it wasn't a state, we could, yeah. But maybe you have different ways of operating here. I don't know. That's just the way we look at stuff. We look at how many certs we have on hand. That's how many guys we need. And, you know, we prorate it from there. So the, yeah, the 9, the 9,500 active certs, that number was taken this morning. And we did divide that up by 13, 13 inspectors, which, you know, some more or less. It ranges anywhere from 500 to probably 900 apiece. And they're servicing the area. And I was going to mention too, I'm not sure exactly what the total electrical contract is on that, on that hospital here, that Trinity Hospital, but I was thinking that the fees would be roughly like $3,500 or something like that. So, and I know there was one that Luke was concerned about earlier, that Shields job. I think the fees are like 2,500. And yeah, you guys did the inspections. We did the final, but I addressed that in an email. I got no issue with being fair about reimbursing the city, but the job hasn't closed out yet, so it's not reimbursable yet. So we're not trying to take money from anybody, so. Anyway, whatever you guys decide, and gals.
Sir, can I ask, so, one question I have is, what's your, what's your capability to flex, to add somebody or, you know, in a situation where you have a larger project like Trinity Hospital or, you know, something that's pretty massive at certain times?
Well, you know, we, that, that diesel refinery that we did out in Dickinson, that was a $40 million electrical job. And, you know, when need be, we'd have other guys go help that local inspector do that. We just coordinate and just make sense of it, you know? Yeah, that job alone was like 40 million, so, big job, huge, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Anyway, we're here to help. We're not here to, you know, take anything away. And I completely understand if, you know, Minot wants to keep their inspection process, that's great too. It really is. But we just need to come to some conclusions here so we can move on to. So, oh, I was going to add too. So we have one guy that lives in Minot right now. And this other applicant that I, that I really would like to hire, he lives in Minot also, which we'd probably assign to Ward County, which we did the stats, and Ward County would be busy enough to, including Minot, would be busy enough to handle an individual. So then, if there was a vacation model or guys going on vacation that's assigned to this district, we'd have another guy living here. Or we have, there's three capable people in the Bismarck office that would cover that, so. And we'd still work with Lori and your office there to coordinate the inspection, so. I don't see a problem, but I understand the giving up something too. I really do, so. Whatever you people decide.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Carrie?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the main motion to City Council not retaining the Electrical Inspection Program for the FY 2023 budget year.
Second? Have a motion, a second? Someone, you second it?
Paul second.
Discussion, go ahead.
If I may comment, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Please.
Is there, there's no discussion left unamended? Is there? Okay. Oh, I always get that confused. Okay.
Just in general, we've talked about a few different things, but I'll bring it back to this at the end. And that is, I think what you can see here is you can see the passion of our employees and what they do every day. And they're just trying to provide the best service they possibly can on behalf of the citizens of our community. So I definitely respect the passion and the defensiveness that they have. And I want employees to work for us that are that passionate about what they do every day. That being said, as we've, as we've discussed multiple times since I've been here, government is changing. We have to find a way to adapt. We have significant pressure, I think, in our constituency, and this was evident in our community survey. You know, we have to be mindful of the tax burden that we have. Of course, the challenge is, and I've, I've kind of talked about this in passing a couple of times, I've never sat in a meeting trying to find ways to cut a budget, and I haven't come out with more ways to spend money. Because the services we provide are passionate, they're needed. Anytime we talk about a potential cut, people come out of the woodwork and defend that not only do we need that position, but we actually need more resources towards it to do a better job every day. But I think that in order for us to change and adapt as a government, we have to become more regional. We have to have more partnerships. I think the days of siloing and providing duplication of service quickly needs to come to an end. And so this is one that I brought forward at previous meeting for potential consideration, because I do believe this is an area that we can, we can partner. This is an issue about local control, whether the city thinks that they can do it better or whether the state can do it adequately enough or equally. And I think this is worth some, some consideration of moving forward with. Because if the state can do it, I haven't been in any other state that the state does. can do it, I haven't been in any other state that the state does electrical inspections. But if they are able to do it, and they are resourced to do it, should we continue to duplicate that here? Now, if there's a strong need that, from a local standpoint, that there's a local need for us to continue to do that, then I'll support it. That's why it's built into the city manager's recommended budget now, to provide flexibility that that's the direction of the council. But I do believe that we need to find ways to partner more regionally and quit duplicating services across government, whether that's the city in the county, or the, the city in the, in the state, or even the city in the federal government. I don't know that we can afford to continue to duplicate these services the way it's been structured in American government across the country. So, in my opinion, this is, I think this is a good test on how we can do that, and have that regional partnership. So, I would actually recommend to the council, at least for a year, try this with the state and see how it goes, and then we can monitor and see what the response is from our local contractors. Because the last thing I wanna do is make it more difficult for our contractors. I don't want projects delayed. I do have some, some concern that we've talked about with the, the state representatives, that I think these are all surmountable. But, you know, we'll make sure we don't have any differences of interpretation of code, so that when we're at a point where we're trying to issue a certificate of occupancy, that our staff doesn't think that the electrical code is up, or the electrical work isn't up to code, that could be an interpretation issue, those kinds of things. But I do think that there's a path forward with this, and I'm really probably gonna do this, but I'm actually gonna go against the staff recommendation here on this. And I think that this warrants some further consideration and some, some like that, because we have to figure out a way of doing business in a different way.
Thank you, Harold. Any other...
Just one more final point. And if it doesn't work, I mean, well, well, it's been working for almost two months. If it doesn't work for the rest of the year, and come January, February, it's a disaster, do a budget amendment, add it in there, try to hire somebody. But I mean, I think just removing them in the 2022 budget, we, we should do that, too, and reallocate that money, because obviously, if it's not in the 23, I think there's no need in the 22.
Anything else? Any other? You amended motion.
So, the motion that we're gonna be...
Could I make a comment? So, I hear the way this is going right now. The only thing is, I would ask that communication be open from the city office, so that we aren't gonna have any roadblocks, or butting heads, or any of that business, okay? And, and so, the gentleman that is willing to come to work for us, he said to me, he says, "Well, James", he says, "What happens if Minot changes their mind in three months, and then am I gonna lose my job?" And I said, "Well, I don't know." I said, "I'd have to ask that to this, this group." You know what I'm saying? We aren't purposely going to do anything to, to, you know, cause problems, or, I, I mean, I get it, you know, at the end of the day, it's not gonna be a perfect world either. I understand that. There's always gonna be a hiccup or something, but we aren't purposely gonna try to, to do any of that. And, you know, I've always been, and I've been in the process, or, I've been in the business of project managing and hiring people for the last 25 years. And I've never wanted to hire anybody without giving them a permanent job. You know what I'm saying? I, I don't, I don't wanna be in the business of hiring somebody and then having to lay them off in three months. So, I guess I just wanted to say that, too, for consideration.
So, my perspective is, if your inspectors do the job that they're hired to do?
Right.
It's gonna be permanent, right? The only way, it sounds like we will come back and revisit this?
Okay.
Is if customer service wanes, and, you know, your people aren't doing the job that we, you know, expect of them, and that our residents deserve.
Sure.
So, I mean, you know, that's...
That's fair.
Yep.
Right, that's fair. I just expect communication from your...
And if your people have prob, you know what I mean?
Inspection office, too.
Because our duty is to, citizens and residents and businesses of the city, right? If your people have problems, you know, that's what our city manager is there for. Like, I do not want MDSB, you know what I mean, sitting and having problems, and having hiccups, or, you know, roadblocks that are impacting the ability for us to do, for you to do electrical inspections in our community. And I would fully expect that you would, you know, take that up with Mr. Stewart if that was happening, because, again, you won't be able to do your job if?
Right.
You know, every, all the pieces aren't working together, so.
And that's what I always say, we don't read minds very well. So if there's a problem, you gotta let us know. So.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
We have clarification on the motion.
That's what I was just gonna get.
I'm gonna look to Kelly, just in case I say this wrong, but I think the motion is to amend the original motion to remove the electrical inspection program from the FY 2023 budget. This is voting to amend it.
So, it'll be amended with the word retain struck out, and it will be remove instead of retain. That's the motion to amend. We haven't actually voted on the amended, you know what, you know what I mean?
Okay, let's call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
So now, we still have to vote on the motion. So the motion now on the table is to remove the electrical, electrical inspection program for the FY 2023 budget year.
Please call the roll. Oh, go ahead, Paul.
I just wanna speak to this amended motion. Again, this is an opportunity, I'll reiterate it again, this is an opportunity for the city to save some money, and, and save some costs. Pending, the state sees this as an opportunity to provide service in the city of Minot. And, and again, it will be a permanent position, as long as those standards that Luke and his department have, have set forth are maintained. And, and again, I have full confidence that the state can do that. And, and that's why I'll support the motion as amended, so.
Any other comments?
Steve? And just an expression of being someone on the fence regarding this. I guess on the positive side, wanting, making me wanna support this is Harold's position and his argument. I think, and the second thing is the fact that we've tried this for two months, and it seems to have worked. You mean, our own staff tell us that there have been no problems. The third reason to support is because it would save some money. The fourth, I think, conceptually, theoretically, does make sense to try to coordinate and cooperate on services and share things as much as possible. On the other side, I am concerned about the quality of service. We have been measuring this more and more in terms of what we deliver, and reading through the reports, especially from inspections, it seems like our users, both contractors and individuals, are very satisfied with the way services are going now. And I think this is really one of those core municipal functions, assuring basic safety that, that we need to be personally responsible for. There's no reason why we can't defer it, especially if the state electrical board is really the authority on what's safe and what isn't. My main concern, I think, would be quality of, of service and timeliness. One of the things we've tried very hard in the past years to do is to be more responsive, to cut timelines, and to facilitate development. Perhaps the best example of that is the Development Review Team process, which you set up a few years ago, to make it easier for people to develop property, to build things, to remodel things, et cetera, particularly in terms of big projects. And that's the only thing I, makes me hesitate a little bit, is this notion of quality of customer service and timeliness. If you're waiting to issue a certificate of occupancy, and all your inspections have been done except for one, I don't wanna be in that position. I think we're starting to charge people a reasonable amount of money for these kinds of services, and they deserve the best quality and the most timely service we can provide. So I'm willing to support this, as long as we keep close track of how things are going. And if we start getting complaints from individuals or contractors, that we work with the state to try to get them on board in terms of responsiveness and timeliness. That is my only concern. And I, I say that because I think we've gone quite a distance, quite a ways, in, in being more responsive. And I don't wanna see that stop. So if we can continue to maintain our current level of service, I'm okay with this change.
Thank you, Steve. No further discussion? Please call the roll.
Would I permit you make a comment?
Come on up.
This is a little bit of, from a electrical side, as well as a citizen of Minot. And as you very well know, there's no free lunch. The state electrical inspectors are gonna get paid, and they naturally get paid more than our city inspectors. So, as a, as a taxpaying, taxpaying person in, in Minot and North Dakota, somebody's gotta pay their, their license, their, their fees. Now, I've been electrician for 50 years, I've got, had license. I've got a contractor license right now. And so, I'm, I'm not talking about electrician, I'm just talking from experience. I've worked with both the city electrician, inspectors. I even helped out inspecting for a while. I've worked with the state inspectors, they're all satisfactory. No free lunch. For me, it is almost like a free lunch, because being retired, I paid zero, minimal, I shouldn't say zero, minimal state taxes. Somebody's gotta pay these guys their wages. But, and it's not just the cost. It's partially in that I like to see the city control. I would like to call my alderman and say, "Hey, this is not happening right," whatever. I've got not one bone to pick with the state board. I've talked to the different inspectors over the years. You ask them a question, and they tell me a shorter route, an easier route to do what I, so, they are excellent people. But I just saying, this is what you realize, this is no free lunch. That, that they're not, we're not gonna save us as taxpayers, city of Minot, North Dakota, we're not saving anybody any money.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just one point, these are all fees, so what they're essentially doing at the state is, you know, they're, how do I say it? They're spreading, they can do more work with less. So, we're giving up a little fees, but we're saving the taxpayers a lot more money. And they spread that across their staff. So it's, it's a law of large numbers. I mean, there's no taxpayer, I mean, it's fee income is what it is from the taxpayers when they're doing stuff. But as far as general fund dollars in the state, no.
Thank you. Yes, one final comment, Jim.
One more final comment. If, I don't know if you guys have computers there, if you wanna go to our fee structure, it's on page 35 of our laws and rules, and it talks about the job cost. Up to $500, it's 50 bucks. Between $500 and $20,000, it's $50 for the first 500, plus one and a quarter percent after that. It's on page 35, if you wanna see what our fee structure is. And that's the only way we generate revenue, is by the fees and license fees. Apprentice, registration card is 10 bucks a year, journeyman is 25, and master is 50 bucks. So, and we have approximately 8,500 electricians licensed in, with our office in North Dakota.
Thank you. Let's call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Moving on to 9.3, employee healthcare and benefits. This is just informational?
Can we, should we put this in our special meetings?
If I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, this is on the agenda at the request of Alderman Striley. He did have some information. I believe he's emailed some out. It's up to you. I will tell you that this is a fairly comprehensive conversation, and if you wanna schedule us on one of the special meetings, that may be more effective, but I don't wanna preclude Alderman Striley from presenting the information that he has.
I agree, I agree.
Would it be in general, the general government one, you think, Roscoe? Which one do you think? General government?
Yep, that's fine, yep.
Okay.
Okay, we are, we are pulling, essentially pulling 9.3 out of the agenda. Move to 9.4, city attorney position.
Okay, I'm gonna make this easy. I have a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. So, Kelly, thank you so much for breaking it up for us and doing this. And if folks don't know, Ms. Tendershot has given her resignation after working for the city for seven years. Is there, what, nine?
Ten.
Ten? Well, a lot of time, since she's been 14. And it is very sad to see her, her go, but she's making a, a decision and a career move that's gonna be great for her. And her service to the city has been amazing, and to all of us on council, she has been very always responsive and informative when we've had, you know, really stupid legal questions. So we appreciate your patience and, and kindness with us. And I'm sure the mayor has a coin for you before you leave on Friday. So, Kelly prepared a memo for us. And so, here's what I'm, so there's four sort of steps that you've outlined. The first being recruitment. So I like Kelly's suggestion that we go with number one, which is the HR director basically advertising it in different venues, that the current city attorney would have input into making sure we're hitting the legal websites as well. I would just add, like, on August 31st, I know this is a quick turnaround, but, I mean, I think we have to move quickly on this, August 31st time date for the closing date. So that would be my suggestion for recruitment. For the interview process, I don't think we should sort of wait to figure that out, again, because I, the longer we go without a city attorney, the more it costs us to get outside council, and puts more workload on our two other attorneys in the office. So for the interview process, I actually would like to see it be a panel of four, with one of the current attorneys in the office, either Nick or Stephanie, the city manager, a council member, or the mayor, and a, an agreed-upon local, a local member of the bar here in Minot. I think that's a good number, not too many. And of course, then, they would then bring their recommendation, because it is an employee that does report to us, to, to us for consideration. And limiting it to one city council member or mayor would keep it, would it, if we just have one?
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, anytime the city council appoints two or more people to?
Two or more people.
Perform a task, that is a committee, the council, which is subject to the open meetings.
Oh, I thought it was two or more, okay. Okay. So we could do, we could do, you know, the mayor and one member of council. Okay. And then, third, interim legal support. I think we should authorize the city manager and HR director to have authority to approve this as needed, as legal issues do come up. And then, come back to council if there are things that come out of that that we need to address. And then, then allowing the city manager to work with the outgoing, the city attorney for interim legal support. She is kindly offered to offer that in the interim. And I think that is very generous and would be incredibly helpful. So those are the four sort of big areas. I don't know, Kelly, if I'm missing one of the, the points, but that's where I'd like to, like, sort of start the discussion, and that's how I'd like to see us move forward.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Do I have a motion and a second?
I'd like to third that. The only concern I have, though, is...
Can I get a fourth?
Is in terms of having the deadline date to the end of this month. I don't know, I'm, I have a visceral concern about that. In my experience, the best people aren't the ones necessarily who are actively looking for a job now. And I think we're talking about a fairly high-level position. And I'd like to maybe give it a month. And I agree that we need to get going quickly, but I think two weeks is, is a significant, is too quick if someone wants to make a judgment with their full faculties in use. It just...
Kelly, does that sound reasonable? Especially if you're gonna be helping us out in the, the meantime, if we can come to a contract with you?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Padraig Gula and Alderwoman Evans, I think a month is probably a good minimum amount of time.
Till September 15th, Steve? Does that sound good?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Tom, Marcus, something.
So, go ahead, Mark.
So, as we're contemplating this, I just, I just want to ask, so, the, this committee that we're doing, or appointing, is gonna make a recommendation. Will, will we have the opportunity, then, as a council, to interview the, the candidate who is recommended, for instance? I guess I'm interested in kinda how the process goes, once, you know, it, it could be somebody none of us know, or, or that some of us are unfamiliar with, I guess, do we get an opportunity to interact with that end, that?
Kelly, how did it work when you were hired?
Council members, when I was hired... Council members, when I was hired, I was interviewed by a panel, and then I was interviewed by the city manager at the time, Lee Staub, and then he made a recommendation to the full council.
Hasn't the process changed since then, though? Because now the attorney is directly accountable to the city council, not the city manager. So I almost think that, isn't there some sort of executive session that has to happen in the interview process? Or do you just bring the candidate up here and fire away?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Striley, personnel records can, or personnel discussions can't happen in an executive session under the open records and open meetings law. So if the city council wants to interview the applicants, they can certainly do that. It would be similar to Mr. Stewart's city manager process, and all of those meetings would be subject to the open meetings law.
Mark, would you be, how about if the recommended candidate from the committee, like, not the whole applicant pool, but if the committee is acquiescing around, you know what I mean, one candidate, that person comes before us instead of bringing, like, the whole parade of them?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not trying, yeah, I'm not suggesting that if we have this process that, that's been outlined, I'm not suggesting that we go back and start over and do it again.
Right, right, right.
So I, I guess what I'm saying then is, yeah, I'd be comfortable with, with meeting with the recommended
Yeah, I like
Individual, and then if something comes up that
Right, that's a deal breaker.
We want to talk to somebody else out of that, then we have that prerogative perhaps. Sure.
I like that. I mean, I mean, it's just one person, so it's not like, you know what I mean, we're, yeah, especially if they're coming from afar or something.
So are we doing friendly amendment?
Are you looking at your cheat sheet?
Nope.
Well, no, we're, we're sort of doing a collective motion, I think.
So where are we at?
Call the question. I'm asking for the question to be called.
Yeah, she'll repeat the question if she understands it before we, where we're at.
I'm calling in the question of what, what's the motion? Sorry, yeah, you might need to help me out.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, for the motion to, at this point, I have, HR will advertise for the position, and I think everybody unanimously agrees for a September 15th, 2022 deadline for applications. The interview process will first include a panel, which would be made up of a current member of the city attorney's office, the city manager, a city council member or the mayor, and a member of the North Dakota bar. And that panel will make a recommendation to the full city council, and then the two additional retaining outside council or interim council elements of the motion as well. I think what's being discussed right now is whether the city council wants to include in this motion to have the, the recommended applicant come before the city council for an interview.
Yeah, so I would add that to the number, the second part, right, that the panel makes a recommendation, and that recommended candidate comes before council for final approval or whatever, questions, final approval.
Just a question real quick. So the city attorney's office is a small office, and I don't know what the intent of the current staff is, if one or both of them choose to apply for this position, and how that would affect your panel. I'm all about including employees into the interview process. I'm not opposed to that. But again, I don't know what the intent of anyone in the office of potentially applying for the position would be, so that would make it difficult to appoint, or you would have to change the representative from the office and adapt.
So can we talk about this a bit? Kelly, any suggestions? So, I mean, the intent for that was somebody, a practicing attorney who has an understanding of what is involved in this position, because it's so multifaceted, it's so unique. Like, would it be sufficient just to have a member of the bar that's not applying for the job?
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, when I applied for assistant city attorney, and then again, no, just assistant city attorney, there was a member of the bar, and then there were two department heads and another staff member, if I remember right. So maybe a suggestion would be us, another staff department head, department director. They have some understanding of, you know, the types of issues that routinely come up.
And as we get closer, like, maybe our September 6th meeting, discuss who, you know, the mayor or city council member would be, and hopefully think about some, with your, if you have any recommendations for local members of the bar that would be appropriate to, to sit in with that, and department head, or do we want to discuss that now? What?
What about, is HR, I mean, is that appropriate?
Yeah, I, that would be what I would think, HR, as a department head.
Or Kelly, but she's not going to want to do that.
Okay, that makes it easy, okay.
My question was just on the number of candidates, if one is recommended, or if it would be better if there's two or three individuals recommended to, to interview in front of council, similar to how Harold's interview went. I, I don't know, if, if one recommendation is fine, I'm fine with that, too.
I think we just do one. I mean, I think you trust your committee, you know what I mean, and I don't, that's why I'm trying to make the committee sort of from different aspects of the, not community, but you know, like, it's not just, you know, Harold and Tom sitting in a, in a room and telling, you know, it's
I'm fine with that.
And I think if there's, if that, you know, if there's not good candidates, I, I can't see that committee, you know, just saying, well, let's hire somebody because, you know, we need someone.
I know where you're going.
We've been down that road before.
Yeah.
And it's not a good road.
Yeah, no, we'll just keep on muddling through if we need to.
So the question's been called.
Okay, Kelly, if I'm totally wrong on this motion, you just let me know. So the recommendation is to open the city attorney position and direct staff to keep it open until September 15th of 2022 for the closing date. Number two is to have an interview process, first be the panel of four people, one being the HR director, one being the city manager, one being a local member of the bar, and either the mayor or a council member. Second part of that is to send a recommendation to council where that person, interviewee would come before council. Thirdly, we are authorizing the needs for assistance in No, so two of the things that the current city attorney, so it, you had the right wording.
Michaela, it's number two and three of the recommendation.
So determine whether to authorize, or authorize the city manager and HR director to pursue a part-time arrangement for city legal services with the current city attorney. Yeah. And retain outside counsel for assistance on legal matters during the interim period? That's it? Yeah. I do have one question, though, I'm sorry. Okay, if we have to open it up to open meetings anyways, I, I think then I would recommend a council member and the mayor. So it would be a five person. We have to open it up anyways, so. And then on September 6th, like, I'll work with Kelly and try to identify a member of the local bar, and then, you know, if there's some council member, you know, gearing, you know, we can talk about who those two people would be on the 6th. But, okay, that's it, those are all my changes. I'm turning my microphone off.
I'll do it.
Oh.
Speaking of changes, I don't want to complicate matters, but I think there are two things I would bring up. One is I think the job description needs to be fine tuned. For example, the person no longer would report to the city manager, so that needs to be clarified. The other thing is that, I've talked about this with the city attorney, and I'm just going to propose that we alter her responsibilities before she chose to leave, but there are two things that I've been thinking about over the years. One is that I personally would like the city attorney to be more involved in risk management and keeping us out of trouble. One of the things Harold observed, and I hope I'm not breaking any confidence when he arrived here, was that we seem to be in a lot of, a lot of legal disputes, and I don't know if that's the norm or not for a city our size, but it struck me that we seem to be litigating a lot. And I've also been concerned over the years about occupational safety, and I think over the years, there have been times when we really haven't been given an accurate picture of what the risk profile is for the city in terms of our staff and then workers' comp issues. So I, I would like to see something added to the job description in terms of making that person the coordinator of our risk management efforts, both from a legal sense, so we don't get sued, and also trying to keep our employees and our citizens out of trouble. The other thing, and I, I don't want to intrude on the city manager's prerogatives here, but I see the city attorney as potentially having a, a greater role than just drafting ordinances and the kinds of things that are mentioned in the current job description. I would like to see them as a full-fledged member of the executive or management team, providing their own perspective from their profession on many of the issues that face us. I think in the past, again, from my perspective, the city attorney has been somewhat marginalized, and we haven't taken full advantage, excuse me, of their resources and what they can bring to the management team. And again, what they could bring would depend on the person and the particular needs of Harold and, and the other department heads. But those are the two things I'd like to see us tweak at some point. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the form of a motion here or anything, but I'd like us to think about those things, because attorneys are really bright people, and they tend to look at the world a, a different way than most of us do. And I think they have something to add from that perspective, and, and again, the issue of kind of helping keep us out of trouble. So I'd, I'd like us to think about that when we get a little bit closer.
Thank you.
So Kelly, could, I saw the job description attachment, so maybe in that first pair, the nature of work, adding the change that we did a few years ago where, you know, who, the attorney now reports directly to city council, blah, 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 blah.
Call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Let's move on to number 10.
Oop, I got one more under miscellaneous, if I, if I can touch on to something.
Okay.
I want to go back to a conversation earlier with regards to officer positions. I've been able to skim over the, the letter we've, we've been given, and, and again, I, I want to be very clear in that the public doesn't miss the point, and that, and that our officers don't miss the point. This is not about cutting positions to save tax dollars, because in my recommendation, there is no cost savings to taxpayers. What there is, is that there is a very mindful and deliberate allocation to the future of this building with the cost savings, so that when female or male officers go into a locker room, there's adequate space for them. When there's sensitive items such as evidence stored on, they will no longer be stored on wooden shelves in a closet, that when a SWAT call comes in, we don't have to move a bobcat out of the way to get the SWAT vehicle out. That when an officer needs to get away to use the gym facilities that's provided, there's adequate and up-to-date equipment in there. I'm not trying to take away from the effectiveness, and I, I don't want that to get lost. It's very important that we leave this dais, that there's, I would love nothing more than to give 10 positions to the police department and, and, and have them filled tomorrow. I'm a realist in the sense that that's not going to happen. What is going to happen is that we are going to have to make a very large expenditure in the city of Minot, and to call on taxpayers to either renovate this building or build a new building to support the efforts of our police department. And I want to make sure that this dais sends the message tonight, and with this budget, and through this process, that we are mindful of that expenditure, and we are willing to invest in our police department in the future. So I, again, I, I, I'm going to say that I take a little offense to this letter, that it's, that it's that we are not being mindful of the police department, or that we're trying to take away, again, we haven't been able to fill the positions. Let's take those dollars, the taxpayer dollars that we are stewards of, and make sure we're putting them towards an effective and, and a very real issue that's, that, that is going to be facing our community. Because when I go to a taxpayer, three years from now, two years from now, and say, I need 10 million bucks or 20 million bucks to build a new police department, I want to say we've been mindful of those things, and we've been paying attention to those things, and we've been forward-thinking, and we're going to be proactive versus reactive. I want to be very clear, very clear, that I support, and I think everyone up here, I know everyone up here supports the police department and their efforts. But I'm also looking from 30,000 feet above at the big picture and the real issues that we're facing that are coming, whether we like it or not, we're going to have to address this building and the future of this building and the future house of our police department. So I, again, I just want to make sure that that goes on the record, and that it's not painted in a way that, that I don't support the police department.
Olson, you had the mic, why don't you lead off the liaison?
I've got nothing.
You've got nothing?
Nothing.
Mark?
Pass.
Roscoe?
I've talked enough for tonight.
My, my report was in the, the mayor's report earlier. Carrie?
I just want to congratulate the library for finishing up a great summer, programming and activities for our young people, and we're moving back into school season, so there's a whole new set of programming, but kudos to the, the staff for keeping our young people engaged and involved this summer, and helping them keep up with their academic work. So, thank you, Janet, and your staff.
Lisa?
Thank you. I attended the Service Space and Planning Council Executive Board meeting earlier this week, and as we had been addressed a couple of meetings ago about some concerns on representation from the city on the loan review committee, the executive board did take that into consideration. It will be looking at it and bringing recommendations, bringing recommendations to the October Service Base Executive Board meeting. So I can report back on that once a decision is made regarding that. And then I think it's been a few months since I have reported on the dental task force, which will be providing curriculum at the CTE when those doors are going to be opened. Some key staff members left Dakota College of Batno through retirement or through new positions, so there's been a little bit of a lull, but now they're planning another meeting, so hopefully next time around I can report on that as well.
Steve?
Thank you. I spent last week in Minneapolis attending a convention, two workshops, one of which was on employment satisfaction, the other was on latest in the science of police use of force. I also received some specialized medical care, which is interesting. But anyway, despite that, I did want to give an update. Last month, the Commission on Aging met. Things are going reasonably well. There was a letter to the editor of the newspaper talking about some of their activities. The commission was not, was disappointed with the preliminary decision to cut their funding, so I explained what led to that and encouraged them to make their feelings known. So Commission on Aging, everything is under control. In terms of the Emergency Resource Council, Trinity Medical Center presented a report on their capabilities. They are planning on moving into the new hospital and fully occupying it. It's either in March or May of 2023. Can't read my writing here, probably do need more visual care. They're looking at 148 single occupancy rooms, and they are coordinating with the state health department in terms of making the move with their patients. And they also talked about their very active planning for emergencies and working with other community organizations. Their primary priorities in terms of preparedness or in terms of active shooter situations, in terms of mass casualty events, particularly having to do with hazmat situations. So we have a lot of truck and rail traffic here, and I think it's very prudent to be prepared for that. And their last area of focus was on snow and ice storms and blizzards, which obviously makes a lot of sense. So it sounds like, from what they're saying, Trinity does a good job of exercising, preparing, and planning for various contingencies in the community. The last thing I wanted to report on was the Comprehensive Plan Committee and its work. Again, I missed one of the meetings because of Minneapolis, but there are three public meetings planned for this week to get further input as the plan is being finalized and fine-tuned. One is this coming Tuesday from 6:30 to 8:30 at Ramstead Middle School, and that primarily is looking at the northwest area of town and how it's growing. Then on Wednesday from 3 to 5 at the Hess Corporation on 16th Street, there'll be another meeting that'll focus on the southwest area and extraterritorial growth zones. And the final meeting will be this Wednesday, the 17th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Carnegie Center, looking at downtown and flood-impacted neighborhoods. And I would strongly encourage people who are concerned about the development of our community, particularly for the next years until 2040, to attend those meetings and get a sense of where things are heading and to offer further input. I did go to the first round of meetings a couple of months ago, and they were very interesting. It was very good to hear citizen and audience input. So those are my reports.
One more thing. I just wanted to thank the city manager and department heads who, who participated and hosted the, the budget discussions on social media last week. I think they were very helpful. They're still up on social media, so if folks want to, you know, watch those, there was one when it was the Public Works, and one was General Government, and one was with our Public Safety Department heads. But thank you for taking the time, and the department heads for, for doing that, and trying to keep our residents engaged and informed about the budget. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Kelly Hendershot, thank you again.
All right, that leads us to item 10, and that is adjournment. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Whoever, anyway.
We are.
There is.